Sorry.
I'll talk to you later, I'm at the city council meeting. Bye.
Somebody's tweaked with this chair, it doesn't work right.
No, this came from Public Works. Steve did it again.
Steve, do you know why we have this?
Yes, it's actually an addition inadvertently when the packets were put together. I gotta make sure I'm looking at the right one. That's for your next session.
Right.
We have attached the cost spreadsheet for one of the two contracts, this is the second contract.
So it's just an addendum?
It's added to the landscape maintenance item that you'll hear at the end, last item tonight. It was inadvertently left out of the packet, so the clerk said she would distribute those for us.
I think I'll have to look back behind here, see who we are.
Now you can be Mark and I can be Mike.
Okay.
Greetings. Good morning, sir.
Stephen, are you gonna do that PowerPoint over there?
I guess so.
Since I don't see you.
All I gotta do is turn it on and then you take it from there, right?
It should be on the screen already.
Would you like me to put it up?
When I push the button after we go through the opening, it'll be on the screen.
You're telling Barbara just take a deep breath and get higher than kite and enjoy the rest of the night.
Pardon me? No, I just got stuck. Okay, we're gonna call, is everybody here? Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please. Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Payne.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
President.
Mayor Powers.
Here. Could you read the public comment, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on agenda items during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk.
Do you have any speaker sheets?
No, I do not.
Okay, so then we'll start with the presentation regarding the draft wastewater treatment plan, facility master plan, near-term upgrade design, and draft project environmental impact report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for coming early tonight and giving us some prime time to spend a little bit of time with you. Sort of got a large issue that has some ramifications for the city's future and didn't want you to feel rushed with a presentation that's gonna cover several features tonight, and so the early session will let us sort of focus on this without getting tangled up with other issues on the agenda tonight. So again, thank you for an early session. Tonight, we have with us Jeff Pelz with West Yoston Associates and obviously Sandy with our Community Development Department and some of our staff, Mark Clarkson and John Griffin. And we're gonna be presenting this in pieces and all of us have a small piece of this presentation tonight. With that, I'm gonna have Jeff Pelz start and give you an overview of what this is all about.
Do I need to use a microphone?
It'd be good, because we may be on camera.
Be a good idea.
If you'll just look at me, I'll advance the slides for you.
You can hook up the mic instead of holding two devices.
I don't mind, I'm okay if everybody...
Yeah, I'm not sure that the plug-in for the receiver is...
Do you want me to go ahead and...
It's in here, so I'll change slides for you, if it's not working.
Okay, thank you. This is an outline of our presentation. We're going to start off with kind of a summary of the facilities' master plan document itself, and then Sandy will touch on the environmental review process that's been going on simultaneously with that. I'll give you a brief update on the conceptual 10 percent design documents, progress, and an update on the estimated project costs. Then we'll touch on the financing plan and the future council actions that are going to be needed in the coming months. Next slide. So I wanted to start with a kind of a brief history of the wastewater treatment plant so that you can kind of remind ourselves how we got where we are today. In 1990, a pond system treatment plant was constructed, less than an MGD of capacity, but basically at the site, and if you look out at the site today, those ponds that were integral to the treatment process are still there, but now they're used for storage of treated water. In 1990, the plant, much as we know it today, was constructed. It had a nameplate treatment capacity of 3 million gallons per day, or 3 MGD. And those numbers, that less-than-one number and the 3 MGD number are related to the average dry weather flow capacity. So if you look at the flow over the course of a year, or over the course of the dry months, that's the average coming in. During the day, there's peaks and valleys in the flow, and in the winter, actually, the flow often comes up because you, some rainwater, no matter how hard you try, does get into your collection system and end up at the treatment plant. So there's seasonal variations, and there's also daily variations. But when we talk about the capacity of a plant, we often talk about average dry weather flow, and that's where you see a 3 MGD capacity associated with your existing plant. In 2000, there were some improvements, some flow metering and other things that were added to the treatment plant. And then in 2000, many of you are aware, a major upgrade, called a tertiary upgrade, was actually adding filtration at the end of the treatment process in order to comply with regulatory requirements, but that did not add a capacity to the plant, it just added additional treatment, a higher level of treatment. The disinfection system was also converted to ultraviolet disinfection as part of that same project, again, to meet certain regulatory requirements. And if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them. I'll keep moving, feel free to stop me if I say something that needs additional explanation. The purpose of the facilities' master plan is to define the near-term and the long-term improvements at the treatment plant for a number of reasons. You have a general plan that establishes expected future growth for the City of Galt, and so there's gonna need to be capacity increases over the long term at the treatment plant. You need continued reliability, and you need to continue to meet regulatory requirements. So in order to make a good plan, as opposed to a last-minute plan, we stepped back and we said, "What are the different ways this plant could be expanded?", and then looked at different alternatives and compared them so that we come up with, hopefully, one of the better ways or the best way to capitalize on what you have, but meet the needs of the future. And so that obviously involved looking at the, comparing costs of different alternatives, and ultimately coming up with a long-term implementation plan. That facilities' master plan will provide a foundation for rate study that I believe Mr. Winkler will be talking about in the near, at the end of the presentation. Again, the goal of the facilities' master plan was to establish a well-faced plan for orderly expansion through build-out of the general plan. Next slide. There are immediate improvements identified, and that's the project that we'll talk the most about today. There are new regulatory requirements that will become effective in 2015, and those actually have the effect of making it difficult for the plant as it exists today to meet requirements at the flows as they approach 3 MGD. So we need to do things to the processes that exist to make sure that they can meet these new requirements as the flows increase over time from where they are today. There are also components of the plant, again, that, many of which were built in 1990, and are mechanical components that are reaching the end of their useful life, and that turns into increasing maintenance costs if you don't start doing an ordered replacement of those mechanical components. So you need to do some, you need to address aging components before they become expensive maintenance items, or cause disruptions of the treatment process, which caused Mr. Clarkson great heartburn. The timing of the improvements, we're looking at beginning construction as soon as we can in 2014, and again, I mentioned that the new requirements become effective September 15, and that's a hard deadline. The regional board doesn't have many options for extending that, and it, not meeting certain requirements would result in fines beginning at that time. The entire improvement project, immediate improvements project, doesn't have to be completed, but you do have to finish the pieces that are necessary to meet those particular regulatory requirements.
Are those the ones that are planned to be met by 2015?
Yes.
In the report, it says not everything will be done, so...
Right. The highest priority will be improvements to the secondary treatment process, which is made up of oxidation ditches and clarifiers, and focus on making sure that those processes can meet, it's the nitrate limit, if you got that far in the report. And they can, again, you need to bolster or beef up that secondary process as a top priority, and then some of the other, like the maintenance items, don't, aren't on that same timeline necessarily, although we expect the contractor to do most of it by late 2015.
So did they reduce the nitrification limits? Is that, is that part of the permit itself? Or the levels?
Yeah, they actually added, yeah, they added a nitrate limit to your effluent limit and an ammonia limit. So previously, you had neither one of those, those are just different forms of nitrogen. Ammonia comes into the plant, and if you don't treat for ammonia, it goes out the plant. If you treat for ammonia, you create nitrate in the middle of your plant, and you discharge nitrate, but you're also required now to treat for that nitrate, so you have to go through two treatment steps to get rid of the nitrogen. Next slide. We looked at five main alternatives for the immediate improvements, and fairly quickly narrowed those down to three, and then they kind of branched out into different options for the long-term plan for the treatment plant. We compared those alternatives on, using a number of evaluation criteria. This is just a few of the highlights. We looked at lifecycle costs, which includes what you pay the contractor, but it also includes what you need to spend to operate the plant and buy chemicals and buy power for the plant over the long term. Different options have different chemical and energy and maintenance requirements, so their lifecycleal cost is affected not only by the initial construction cost, but also by the long-term operating costs. And then we looked at kind of the complexity of operations and maintenance, would it require a higher level of operation staffing, which is also, it's a cost and it's also a training issue. And then there's a reliability, flexibility, and ability to meet permits, and this is really key to long-term control of costs at the plant. You don't, you don't wanna buy into a system that doesn't give you the flexibility to adjust as the regulators continue to adjust your discharge requirements. So processes and options that gave a lot of flexibility over the long run were more highly favored than something that kind of locked you into one way of doing things. Energy efficiency is good for other reasons beside costs, that was considered, and then we looked at kind of the risk of negative impacts, which, that one's a little bit harder to explain, but some of the processes that we looked at were not as well-established. There's a new technology, for example, that we actually are gonna keep looking at in the long term and highly recommend that you keep looking at it, but it, there was some risk that it might be, it might not work as billed, so we weren't willing to recommend it for an immediate improvement. So that's kind of what that last bullet is getting at for our evaluation criteria. Next slide. The, on the left side are the five alternatives that we identified for the immediate improvements, and the first one was adding oxidation ditches and clarifiers, which is what you have today. So it's kind of building another unit for each of those parts of the secondary treatment process. That option A was reliable, it provided really good redundancy, which is assurance of meeting permit requirements, even if you have a failure or you're in the middle of a cleaning process and need to shut down one of the units. And it's also relatively simple in the wastewater treatment world, and it's proven, it's working well for all of your requirements that you have, it's also proven in other places for the new nitrate requirements. Option B was building a separate anoxic basin, which I won't go into unless you're really interested. It really didn't save much cost, and it would create a more complex operation, so we actually ruled that one out fairly quickly. Option C was adding a process in front of your secondary treatment system, and that's where we looked at this new technology called microscreening. That option actually had a lower initial cost, but as I kind of alluded to when I was talking about the evaluation criteria, the technology is new enough to where it hasn't actually been used in combination with your oxidation ditch style of treatment. You know, the machine looks good, people that are running it say it works well, but nobody's really tried it with your type of system, and so that created that uncertainty about the ability to work well in the long term, and so we got, we did not recommend that for the immediate improvements, even though it might have been a little bit, less expensive upfront, you would be inheriting a lot of risk, because you'd be one of the first people trying to use it in that, in that scenario. Then option...
Excuse me. Just so I can get it clear in my mind, the microscreening, would that happen before it entered the oxidation ditch? So that would be before?
Exactly.
And it's a form of microscreening for solids, or for what?
Yep, it takes out solids, exactly, and with those solids, it's that, you're taking out some of the biological load that today goes on to the oxidation ditch and requires the bugs in the oxidation ditch to treat it. So you're kind of taking it out and pressing it and taking it to a landfill.
Okay.
And it's getting a lot of attention, it's, looks like it has good long-term promise, but I don't think any of us were willing to take on the risk of installing that right out the bat, right off the bat at the Galt plant. The option D was looking at kind of relieving the load on the oxidation ditches by taking the solids out of there sooner and putting them in a separate aerobic treatment process, and that's a, that's a well-proven technology. We just actually, just completed a plant in Atwater that uses oxidation ditches in combination with that technology, so it was a viable option. And option E was adding more clarifiers, which, with the, with a little bit of analysis, we quickly ruled that one out, too. So if you click it one more time, B and E will go away, and that left us with A, C, and D. So those were the immediate improvement options that we ended up with evaluating in some detail. And then this is the...
Before you go on to that, on that option A, you mentioned its use in other facilities. Can you name some of them?
For the oxidation ditch and clarif, Galt has oxidation ditches, City of Woodland has a style of oxidation ditch, and there's, I mean, they're all over the country.
Oh, it's well...
It's well-established, yeah. You have, you have a very good technology, and the other thing that's advantageous with the oxidation ditch technology is that it, it keeps the bugs under treat, or the bugs are under, the solids are under treatment for a long period of time, and that seems to affect, this is kind of new research, but it seems to affect some of what are called contaminants of emerging concern that traditionally haven't been looked at at treatment plants. Processes that have the solids under treatment for a long period of time, like oxidation ditches, seem to do better at removing those contaminants of emerging concern than a process that maybe uses higher energy and pushes, pushes the solids through it more quickly and does the treatment more quickly.
Do you know if the City of Lincoln has that?
They have, I've been to that plant. They have UV disinfection. Yeah. It could, it very well could be, actually, yeah. It's not coming to me.
Jeff, would you, would you say, you're talking about this emergent concerns, constituents of concern, so does that mean that an oxidation ditch would make your plant a little bit more future-proof to different regulations that may be promulgated from the wastewater or the Water Quality Control Board? Because they keep coming out with new standards, and what wasn't required five years ago or 10 years ago now is. And so does that kind of lend itself to say, "Okay, well, maybe you have a little bit more protection under that because that addresses some of those other constituents in the future"? Is that a...
You used the word "maybe" in there, which is good. And, and I say that because the research is just getting started. I mean, there's, there's some conclusions, but the regulators haven't decided how they're gonna regulate or if they're gonna regulate some of the constituents, and this is just kind of an early indication that the longer retention time processes are, give you some advantage, but...
Well, if you know anything about the regulators, it's just a matter of time.
That's a good way to put it, yeah.
Quick question for you. I know adding the oxidation ditches is probably the least expensive and the most beneficial to the city, but at some point, like you said, our regulator's gonna get to the point where it's gotta be cleaner than the water we're actually taking out of town. Is there any way, once this gets put in place, to put something like C, once it's tried and proven, on the back end?
Yes. Yeah, you go to a tertiary level of treatment now, and that produces a clear effluent. Would you drink it, Mark? Right, not quite. Not drink, not drinkable yet, okay. But it's a good-looking, good-looking water leaving the plant, and processes that, if there was some constituent that you had to go after, you'd probably start treating it after filtration at that point, so it'd be tacking it on to the end. And we tried to, I mean, you've got, you've got area, you know, on most sides of the plant to add that type of a process, so you're in, you're in pretty good shape if, if you need, if you need something more. Can I address the question from the audience? You asked about drugs, pharmaceuticals, and personal care products kind of get lumped in also, sometimes with these contaminants of emerging concern, so that's an example, or drugs are an example of some of the things that people are concerned about in effluent. And there's no process at the treatment plant now, nor at virtually any other treatment plant in California with, with a couple of exceptions, in Orange County, one that I can think of, but, that are intended to address any of the contaminants of emerging concern, including pharmaceuticals. So you're, you are state-of-the-art, or when you add the tertiary treatment and when you get the de-identification capabilities, you'll be state-of-the-art at this point, or state of the regulatory hurdles that are out there, and it, it all depends on what ends up getting regulated and what people need to do to comply with it.
Thank you.
Is there any other? Okay. So the immediate improvements were the, are kind of represented by the blue box on the left. That gets you, maintains your 3 MGD capability at the higher level of nitrogen removal that's required. And as I said, we selected the oxidation ditch, kind of sticking with what you have, adding oxidation ditch technology, or no new technology. And then the second blue box in the center there is kind of the next logical increment of expansion, which would take you to four and a half MGD, million gallons per day, and again, that's that average dry weather flow number. The top set of squares, the green ones, that say C2 primary microscreening, that is the path you would take if we all are confident that when you need to go to that next level of capacity, that technology has matured enough and has a good track record that you can, with confidence, install it and rely on it. So that's kind of the, you know, we're thinking that's probable, and it's likely that you'll take that top path, but, oh, sorry, if, if you take a look at that new technology and just aren't confident, or it's failed miserably in the meantime for some reason, there is a perfectly logical path going to that alternative D that we looked at, the separate biosolids treatment, which actually creates a separate, they'd be large vessels with aerators that treat the highly concentrated solid stream, and kind of, it creates capacity in your oxidation ditches, so you can put more through the oxidation ditches and treat the solids in the separate process. It adds complexity to the plan, but it starts to make sense when you get up, get up to the higher capacities. And then, again, when you go to the next logical increment to 6 MGD, which would be, take you to build out of your general plan, that's, that number's not just picked out of the air, it was actually developed based on what we would expect when you reach build-out of your general plan. If you're on the green path, you'd probably stick with that, but regardless, you have the option of actually using both, both technologies, kind of either-or technology to get to that, that build-out capacity. Got it. I got a message that I should pick up the pace a little bit.
Yeah, we're on page three and it's been 20 minutes, no offense.
Oops, I'm sorry. I apologize. So the selected alternative, immediate improvements, I've talked about, and I'm gonna get into that in quite some detail, and then, again, there are future improvements, and those are, that's what we just saw, that path, path forward to the future. So we'll skip to the next slide. This is a picture of your existing treatment plant and the immediate improvements project. There's a lot of yellow, which is, signifies improvements that are needed to meet those regulatory requirements. And don't be too worried, there's a lot of yellow area, but these are your existing oxidation ditches. We're not building new structures there, but some of the equipment will get replaced with additional monitoring equipment and different aerators. This would be the position or the location of your new third oxidation ditch, and then the other core piece of the secondary treatment processes are your two existing clarifiers, which will have an upgrade to the mechanical equipment, and one new existing clarifier. At the sludge oogins there, half-yellow, half-red, signifying that they address regulatory issues as well as aging infrastructure, the liners need to be replaced. There will also be some access improvements that aren't shown, that allow for safer access for both vehicles up onto the top of the levee as well as pedestrian access. We'd be adding some supplemental dewatering, you know, of a mechanical type of dewatering to make sure that you have the ability to treat the solids coming out of this process. And just to cup, touch on a few other things, the blue is a category of improvements called operational support, so those are some things that will make, make it easier and less costly to operate the plant. Mark will talk about that in a second. We're adding some walls to the existing steel frame structure around the UV disinfection system for some wind protection, demolishing the old coin contact basin that isn't used. This is a building expansion to accommodate the full utility staff that don't have space at the treatment plant today. And this little three-colored improvement over here addresses regulatory compliance, mostly for laboratory safety and ventilation issues, aging infrastructure, the laboratory facility is in much need of an upgrade, and it definitely makes the plant more efficient to operate. So that's, that's taking an existing building and doing some remodeling to improve the laboratory facilities. This is just a simple shade structure to extend the life of your, some of the major operating wield and motorized operating equipment. Next slide. Sandy, take all your time.
Thanks, I'll be brief. So just over a year ago, we issued a notice of preparation for the environmental impact report that kicked off the EIR process. The notice was published in the Galt Herald, mailed to all the relevant local, state, and federal agencies and any interested parties. That way, they can identify what specific issues they think the city should include in the EIR, relevant to their statutory responsibility or their expertise. Scoping period lasted for 30 days. We also held a scoping meeting to accept some public comment during that time. Draft EIR was prepared and released for public review May 1st of this year for a 45-day review period, which ended yesterday. Unfortunately, we did have a little snafu, there were some, there were a few agencies who received the notice of preparation and weren't on the draft EIR distribution, so we quickly rectified that and gave them extended review period, which will end early next week. At the end of the supplemental review period next week, we will prepare responses to any written comments that we receive, make necessary revisions and clarifications in the final EIR, and bring that back to city council in August. It was noticed for August 6th, and I understand the council may be meeting, moving the August meeting, so it will just need to be whatever the next meeting is after August 6th. And, next slide. I won't go into detail about the contents of the draft EIR, except I did want to point out that the overall conclusion of the... except I did want to point out that the overall conclusion of the document is that the project with the recommended mitigation will have no significant impacts on the environment, except for one item, and that is agricultural resources. The sole impact that there is not mitigation for is conversion of up to 35 acres of farmland that immediately surrounds the wastewater facilities. We don't know the exact amount of the acreage until they do the final design, but as you know, the wastewater facility sits on about 67 acres, right in the middle of surrounding farmland on our 300-acre site. 208 of that 300 acres is considered prime, important, or unique farmland, so it's almost impossible to expand the facilities without impacting agricultural land. City Council can still approve a project despite unmitigated significant impacts. You just have to adopt statements of overriding considerations, similar to what we did for the general plan. So staff will be bringing those findings to you when we present the certification in August. And the next slide. There is federal money associated with this project, so that triggers an additional level of environmental review by the federal government, as set forth in the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. The EPA is the lead agency for NEPA compliance on this project. We've been in constant contact with them, and they're moving forward on a relatively parallel track with us. They expect to have their analysis ready for public review in July. The city assisted in that process by beefing up our SEQA document to address a lot of the federal requirements. They commonly refer to that as SEQA Plus. That way, they can pretty much use our EIR as the basis for their own environmental assessment. With that, we're ready to move on to the treatment plant facility design and back to Jeff.
Okay, next slide.
Sandy, before we do, do I understand then that we're going to have to buy more land? Or do we, does the city already own that land that you were referring to?
The 35 acres is part of the 300 acres that the city already owns, so there was not a need to purchase more land.
And the actual footprint of the new structures is going to be quite a bit smaller than that. That number was picked to make sure that your EIR covered you for whatever might be needed as the facility master plan was proceeded, because they were proceeding in parallel. On a similar vein, the staff recognized the issue of needing to accelerate this project to meet that September 2015 deadline, and recommended back in March that you amend the facility master plan contract. And so at that time, we proceeded with the conceptual 10% design. That has proceeded. Next slide. And we actually have drawings that are in more detail, and that gives us a better basis for evaluating the potential costs. And we've got about 40 drawings out of a set that's going to end up being about 310 drawings when you actually go out to bid with the contract. A lot of detail and additional information gets added between the conceptual design and the final design. The estimated project costs are considered really at each step of the way. In the facility's master plan, we're looking at concepts and not a lot of measurements. And so we come up with a preliminary estimate at that stage. With the conceptual design, and we're actually putting pen on paper and, or on computer now, but it gives us the ability to refine and check that estimate. You're still looking at a lot of assumptions about what the final details are going to entail. But essentially, the costs that we came up with in the master plan seem to be confirmed. This is actually the first time in my career, I was reflecting on this on the way here, that the facility master plan cost was so close to the 10% design cost. It really didn't change, which is amazing considering things that got moved around in the meantime. And then you'll get a better estimate, a much better estimate, engineer's estimate of construction cost when the final design is completed. And then on bid day, you find out what the market dictates. And that's the part you can't predict, is what happens on bid day and how hungry the contractors are at that point.
When do you expect final design to be complete?
Is it January? Is that what we're saying? I think January, February?
Yeah, we'll be talking about that, and sort of the next steps and some timing. That'll be pivotal, depending on if council concurs with some of our recommendations to accelerate the process.
So we broke the costs up into three major categories. Costs that are clearly triggered by regulatory requirements, costs that address aging equipment, and then costs that are under this operational support category. Some of the items like UV, if you study the more detailed, or the paper version of this, you can read it. It's kind of hard to see on the screen probably, but the UV, for example, adding the windbreak walls is kind of split between a couple of different categories. And some of the headworks, the improvements are also split between a couple of different categories, just because they address more than one. The bottom line for the, on bid day, we would expect, given what we know today, we would expect something in the order of $21 million as a construction bid cost. And the total costs, when you look at adding a construction contingency, which you carry, not part of the bid, but should be in your budget, and then all of the planning and design services and the environmental work that's gone on, services during construction, your CM, construction manager and so forth, doing the state-required O&M manual, and acquiring one piece of equipment for the biosolids operation, wheeled equipment as a separate purchase, all totals up to a total project cost of $27.4 million. Think about it as a $27 million project in round numbers at this point. And, Mark, did you want to talk about the categories a little bit more?
Sure do. I have to hold on, because that number is really big. You know, when we started this, a little over a year ago, year and a half ago, we didn't know what the numbers were going to be. We have the regulatory issue pushing us. We have a general plan that was just adopted. We have some maintenance needs at the plant. So we had the opportunity to look at everything, even though when regulators tell you your effluent needs to be tighter and cleaner and everything, we know it's going to impact us. So, but we still take this opportunity to look at everything, have everybody focus in on it, from the operators, through the engineers, architects, through the biologists and everything else. And it comes down to a number that really is one of the biggest projects that the city is going to be endeavoring to have. And as you see by the cost on the top part regulatory requirements, you know, that's the major part. That's, when you add it all up and you look at everything, it's about 90% of this is regulatory. And there's no way out of it, except paying the fines and going down that route. And we're trying to prevent that at this point. And we're also, by looking at the 215 deadline, September 215, seeing that if we can save some cost by not pushing the contractor so hard, you know, give the contractor more time to build things, get certain things online. So we're ahead of the project. We're not, you know, begging the state to give us an extra three hours or something, you know, that we are ahead of it and we're moving forward. And this is a massive cost. It's massive to the city. I think initial estimates, you know, several years back was in the 6 to $7 million range. But until you start looking at it and start seeing what we actually have and put it in on paper, looking what the results that we have from the plant operating and what's out there and how much things cost to build, you don't know what the cost is. And this is a large portion. This is where it really comes down to. We've jumped, you know, we're jumping the regulatory hoops, we're jumping the environmental, we're jumping all the things and looking for the best ways for the city. And as I said just when I started, is that we take an opportunity to try to do something good for us. And as Steve, or as Jeff mentioned, we're looking at, not just right now, but we're looking at what will happen when we get, the city grows, and making sure that those puzzle parts can come together at a good cost to the future customers and future citizens here with the city.
Mark, if I could just interject a thought, unless anybody sees on the, well, I could pay a lot of fines for $18 million or $25 million. Well, the problem is, those fines would come with a building moratorium. And I think the city's lived a little bit of that path in the years past. And it'll become a stranglehold, and they'll just keep raising the ante, and the fines will keep compounding. And you won't have any development, and you're basically sort of taking a poison pill with respect to your general plan. So the only option is to try to get reasonable conditions, fight that the most reasonable solutions will work and will be accepted by the regulatory agencies, and then try to deliver on time and under budget.
Good question. I'm looking at your breakdown, I'm not seeing anything regarding the wear study for copper. Is that included in the wellhead arsenic treatment, or is that totally separate?
Wear study is in that planning and design services line item. It's not listed separately, so.
Yeah, we had to, you know, some of the items were under $100,000, and I just wanted to group them together and just to keep this table on one page. We could really have extended this out to about three or four pages, but just to keep things simpler to look at.
I was only curious, because I saw it on the executive summary, but I didn't see it up there. It's like, okay, I'm not dumb, I just got to figure out where it's coming from.
Yeah, the executive summary was done, you know, several months back, and we left it as is, because it's still there. It still pretty much says everything. As Jeff said, we're right on, close to the estimate at the 10% design as we were in the general plan, I mean, in the draft facility plan. And a lot of that has to do with, back in the summer, we knew this was going to be a big cost. We saw this cost growing. So we were digging around, we were looking at what we can do that's going to help us, and next slide will come up soon, and I can point out a couple of things, that we wanted to be able to do something internally with the structures that we have and rebuild some things, take advantage of some of the improvements that are going to be needed. And, it does work, right? I checked it somewhere. Right there, that one right there, upper left-hand corner. That's the oxidation ditch. We do give tours, just give me a call. Only five bucks a piece? No. But we give them.
We've all been out there, haven't we?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
We've all been out there.
Yeah? Yeah. And so the oxidation ditch, it has motors and mixers on it that are over 20 years old. And we're going to change them out. In fact, this new system that we're proposing is going to use less horsepower than what we have right now, because we're going to be able to control things through the flow of the day. Right now, we don't. If the flow is low, it's still at high horsepower. If the flow is high, you know, because we've got to set it for the high, there's no control of it. And so we're going to have a lot of control, so as the flow decreases at night, the horsepower comes down as we need it. So we're actually going to get a better system with the existing oxidation ditches that we have. The sludge right here, those beds were just put in a few years ago. They don't, they won't meet the capacities for 3 MGD, and they work terrific in the summertime. They don't work when it's raining, because as you see, they're just laid out there, they're hoping to dry. Taking advantage of what additional solids handling that we need to have, we're going to put in a mechanical system that can operate during the wintertime, so we can keep produced and we can keep up with our regulatory requirements. The clarifier that you see right here, down in the lower left-hand corner, that's a top picture. This is a picture from the bottom of it, in the right-hand corner. Looking up, the system has been in there for over 20 years. It hasn't had any maintenance. A lot of the fittings and the bolts rusting away. This system would have to be mechanically replaced in the next couple of years, regardless of the regulatory. So we're going to rebuild this. It's about a third of the cost of putting in a new one, you know, a new clarifier. So we're taking advantage of that at this time. And we're also, the clarifier and also the oxidation ditch that we're looking at putting in are going to be similar in size and everything, so it really helps the hydraulics. It helps everything on the plant operate. Next. I got to go fast, I'm going to dance right through here. The aging equipment, there's a few things out there, and that's about 4% of the total cost that we've looked at that are really a problem. And scales of economy for the engineer and the contractor, it's a good time to put it in. One of the, we'll talk about the financial plan in a few minutes. A loan out there from state revolving fund loan is at 1.9%. They've quoted us, it's a terrific loan. But anyway, so we've thrown in a few things that are going to have to be replaced within, probably within the next two to three years. And this project is under construction next year, and will be done. So you've got screens up in the upper left-hand corner. Instead of pulling those out, that's where most people would, we're going to put it, we're going to leave it in, we're going to put a new one right next to it, and we're going to use that for an emergency system. The sludge beds that you see down at the bottom, left-hand corner, we have liners that are leaking right now. This is an opportune time to change those liners out, because we are having problems with contamination on one of our groundwater monitoring wells. And you probably, I don't know if you guys can see it on your handout, there's little dots in it. It kind of looks like there's rashes going across the top here. There are actually geese going, but it comes in better when it's a little bit bigger. But it's really, you see little dots, it's geese, a big ol' flock of geese. They were trying to land on our sludge beds. And you guys have seen that little lab building before. Boy, that went in 1980, and we have, right now, we use it as a meeting. We have some computers in there, we have lab. It's just a, our lab is too small, it's like a highway in the middle of sampling days. So we're going to take that whole building, turn it into a lab, and bring it to OSHA requirements. Next. I'm just giving you a couple of examples. This is, the new structure is a big parthenon there. That was put in place a couple of years ago. But what we found out, when you look down the lower left-hand corner, is that a lot of dirt, rain, and everything's getting on our electrical. All that is electrical systems, that's a high voltage, and we have to maintain that on a weekly basis in the winter. It's really bad having the rain coming in, and the guys are messing with electricity and stuff, it just doesn't work. So we're looking at just putting a few shields there to stop the rain coming in. We're not enclosing the whole building, just about the two-thirds to the left of that. And another operational support we're looking at is the system that you see going to the creek. That's where our discharge is, at Skunk Creek, goes out to Laguna Creek. A meter's there. We can't get to it in the wintertime. Just this last winter, we had a bunch of water that came up, and we couldn't get around to it. And by the way, the snakes have taken over. That's in the default there. That's a mountain garter snake, and I have not seen any mountains within miles here, but that's what he is. That's what the biologist identified him. And later on, that same day, we did find one of those big.
Giant garter snake?
Giant garter snake, little over four feet long, four and a half feet long. And it was, it's hard to identify because they move so fast, but we got a picture, and we think that that's what it was. And that's an endangered species out there. But this gets us out of the wet well, or, I mean, out of the wetland by having another meter. Next.
While we're on that photo, you can see in the background of the upper right is the shooting range, and we've got an unrelated project that's facing that same wetland challenge, so you'll be hearing more about that.
And that also helps us. By moving the meter out of here, it gives us an opportunity to also do something with the gun range. I mean, we need it as far as the plant, but then the gun range may have an opportunity to take that pipe somewhere else, because it's where we're going to put the meter, and now we can cut it out of the wetland completely, if that's the route we want to go. And the Swanson Hawk, you just went, Swanson Hawk area is right up in here. You can just see the fence line and the Swanson Hawk area reserve that we have right now, or preserve or reserve? Preserve. It's right there, right on that edge.
Mitigating lands.
That's it. Again, as I said, it all comes down, how are we going to finance this? How are we going to do it? We've got, we've identified a couple of funding sources. There's, you know, the key word there is combinations of that. We don't know until we get into a funding plan, until we review everything with, you know, at the initial review point on how we're going to pay for it. We're going to look at the facility plan once it's adopted, and we're going to say, okay, what portions of this are strictly for the current rate payers? And there are a couple of pieces that will help future, you know, future. But we have to decide on those portions, and that comes out of the facility master plan. And not to get your hopes up, it's not going to be probably more than 10%. It's, you know, the oxidation ditch, if we made it just for 3 MGD, it'd be a little bit smaller. But then it would affect all types of operational needs. So we're trying to build them straight in line, so there's a few things that are going to help. Will it increase our plant capacity? No, because there's a few other things we have to do to meet that. But some of these portions are going to be able to be used for future customers, but very little of it. But we'll identify it. And then we'll decide with the comprehensive rate study that we do, is, are we going to pay for it right now? Are we going to just increase all the rates right now to pay for it? Or are we going to try to use some of our money in reserves and stretch that out? And that all impacts what the monthly fees are going to be, and how. And that all impacts what the monthly fees are going to be and how they come into play. And so, we'll all, you know, we'll have a full session with the city council, come back, review and look at the different things. We'll get input on it and we'll decide at that point on which direction we're going to go. So, this is a big impact to us and this is the next major portion that we have. Besides the design, this is, this is an important component of how it's going to impact our rate payers today. Oh, yeah, and also on the rate study, it's an opportune time. We've had a few other master plans that have been done, the stormwater master plan, the collection system and the water distribution master plan and the water system master plan. And we're going to just do a rate study. It's, again, scales of economy, we'll do it all at the same time, come back and you guys will get it all at once to see, see how everything falls in place. Because it's basically the same person, same customers are going to be paying for all of this. And it's kind of all related. You kind of used all the same type of calculations and stretching things out for years and depreciation and things like that.
That state revolving fund loan, is that a 2% interest on there? What is the?
1.9% right now. They've quoted us. They just quoted us that last week.
Last week?
Yes.
That's subject to change.
Of course it is, yeah.
That would be subject to change when they go out with their next bond purchase, but they said currently it's 1.9%. And just as a point of information, our prior loan, which we thought was a great rate at the time, is 2.9%. Still a very good rate.
Right.
But we're down another percent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to let Steve take this, but I do want to point out a couple of things. We're not done here yet. There's a lot of things left to do. We've got, we've got awarded design contract. We've got to adopt the DEIR and the MMRP. We've got a lot of major things to do in the next month or two to stay on schedule. And I think one of the concerns that council members had when we were back here in February is make sure we don't miss anything because we're moving. And we are spending all the time necessary on this. We're just not letting anything sit and collect dust. We're moving through. We're dealing with all of the regulatory people, all of the, getting input from every direction that we can and to make this, to make it smooth, to meet our deadlines, but to give us the best cost that we can at this point. Steve, thank you.
We know you have a closed session to follow, so we're going to move very quickly. This is really our last slide. The reason for the study session today is probably best illustrated by this slide. We've got a lot of actions to bring back to you and to try to educate you sort of with a gun to your head, we felt would be, we'd be remiss to do that. We wanted to give you some time to think about these things. We all, when we roll things around, we come up with other ideas or thoughts about how to approach it. But we're going to bring it back to you in pieces. Probably the next piece, the first three items will be in August and we're already starting to prepare those staff reports. Basically, the next steps as a follow-up to tonight, if you're comfortable with proceeding, will be to certify the final EIR once the comment periods close and then to formally adopt the facilities master plan, which you've seen a snippet of the executive summary. The full version is on the city's website under Public Works and is, I believe, a copy's on file with the clerk of the board. If it isn't, we'll get it there. Then we need to, to really proceed, we're going to need to bring back a financial plan. My thought is that might be the next stage of another study session where we come back and we present some alternatives and some pros and cons, some recommendations as to how do we go about swallowing this elephant of $26 million and how much time we want to spread that out over what the rate study would inform to that process relative to how much should be future development versus current rate payers. The lion's share of the short term is going to be current rate payers, but we have some options in how we can spread that out as well. So, we'll be bringing back probably another study session with your indulgence to get you an opportunity to give feedback on those options before we bring a final package to you. And then we would, next step would be, to truth all of this, we've got to have bids in hand. So, we go out to bid with your concurrence and then, once we have final bids, we sort of update the financing plan with real-world numbers and then come back and adopt that plan probably in March of next year. And then the hope would be that we would also, within that same timeframe, then award a construction contract. And again, the goal is to get the short-term critical improvements online by September of 2015 with remaining non-deadline items to follow within the next six months thereafter. The item that isn't specifically noted here is, well, how do we get to final design? And we note that we're going to want to be awarding a contract in August of 2013. To do that, our recommendation, subject to what you've heard tonight and with one other piece of information that is still outstanding, Mark is in the process of awarding a peer review contract on the 10% design and the facilities master plan, bringing in an independent third party who has, does not have a vested interest in the next step of the process to look at the assumptions and the design criteria and the hydraulics and the fundamental sort of options that we've looked at and get an independent review that we, yes, those are good options, yes, we agree with how they arrived at those options and we agree with their analysis of cost. And if we get a, sort of an endorsement, our recommendation would be that we don't change horses in the middle of this stream, that we would go ahead and award the final design contract to West Yost if concerns come out of that and we find some fundamental flaws or concerns in the analysis, then we'd be in a position maybe to bring back an alternative of going out with a full-blown RFP. But we probably would lose three to four months by the time we got a new consultant up to speed. And at this point, we believe we have the right consultant for the job and are very pleased with the preliminary results. But again, to make sure we haven't missed anything, we think it's worth about $10,000 to have somebody look over our shoulder at this point while we still have time to make that decision. So, that would sort of be our thought and our recommendation would be that we pursue that avenue. And with that, we'd open it up to any questions you might have and, or from the audience and be happy to try to answer those.
Okay, let me ask anybody that got questions here, so we start with the ladies.
Ladies first.
Okay, ladies first.
I'm just wondering with all this priority on this project, doesn't really have anything to do with you. Our other deadline is the water meters. Are we going to be able to handle, is your department going to be able to meet that deadline too?
The answer is yes, and we're doing that with some outside help. Rich Prima is still sort of a special consultant to the director to help us get through that. We are in fact preparing a study session, probably come to you in July and probably at this point, the 16th is our target. And we would be asking, well, we'll talk more with Jason and the mayor, but we're thinking a study session on that, again, to sort of introduce what the options are and what some of our thoughts are. We are going to need to go out and do some financing plan and rate study as part of this combined study to further inform the direction we take. But we are narrowing down our recommendation on how to proceed with that.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm looking at your considerations and your milestones and the regulatory improvements. You're only giving yourself 16 months to do final build-out on that and we're going to be able to make that happen?
Well, I'll defer to Jeff as our expert on constructing these facilities, but my understanding is that we believe that if we stay on track and get the final design going and meet that, that ought to be plenty of time for the initial critical improvements.
But being a believer in Murphy, shouldn't we give ourselves a little play here? I mean, you're basically saying we're going to award the contract in March, which means they better be working by the end of March, otherwise we're screwed.
Jeff, your thoughts?
There's a few things that we have a slight control on and one is the design. If we decide to move forward right after the adoption of the EIR and the facility master plan, we're saving, I know Stephen said three to four months, but we're actually saving about six months of going and negotiating with West Yost. The other thing that we have is that there's a possibility of doing some incentive on the design to get the design done a little earlier. But everything that we've seen is that it's going to take through December and a portion of January, even keeping to this tight track. The contractor, there's a few things, if we go with the SRF route, they have up to 60 days to approve bids. And the contractor will be given incentives that will help us get online with the regulatory aspect. We've met with a specialist contractor or consultant who looked at it for constructability and what can happen during that timeframe and they believe that two summers is what is all that will be needed for that oxidation ditch and the clarifier. And we're going to set in the design and in the bid specs, we're going to set that you have to have certain of these milestones done. And there'll be incentive to be done early and there'll be disincentive to be done after that.
This time is really not on our side. We have to keep plugging along.
Absolutely, yes.
I would think that, and also I guess in order of priority of what needs to be done and it sounds like to me that the oxidation ditches, the oxidation ditch needs to be completed along with the clarifier, the additional clarifier, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But I do have a question as it relates to the executive summary because in the executive summary, it says that, and maybe there's just additional information that I'm missing, but for the, it says that specifically exist, the existing, and maybe that's the difference, the existing oxidation ditches were not designed to remove nitrogen from the system. So, is there a different design between, obviously, there must be a different design between the new one and the old ones. Is that correct?
Yeah, what we're doing is, there's more controls that we're going to have on the oxidation ditches. Having a third ditch allows the water to slow down and not, you know, leave the site so quickly, gives more time for the bugs to do their thing, you know, eat up the good food that's coming in. It is good food to them. And to do that, we're also putting some controls. We have no computer controls, we have nothing to make this work, to happen. So, you can take the oxidation ditch, we've run models, or West Yost have run models, they've done, you know, they've turned it upside down and around and make sure, from the manufacturers of these ditches to the process controlling of it, make sure that we do have ample ability to do that in our ditches. And so, new pumps, new mixers, all kinds of things have to happen in the old ditches also.
Okay, so the old ditches will be upgraded to the new and improved method of...
They'll work, they'll work hand-in-hand with the new one. Same with the clarifier, it's going to work hand-in-hand with the new clarifier.
And the beauty of adding one of each at, you know, we're meeting current flows, it's just these new tighter restrictions on future flows by putting in an extra ditch and an extra clarifier gives us the ability to take one at a time, get that built, then take one offline and do these rehab and then put it back online and take the other one offline and do the upgrades. So, we really don't have to skip a beat as far as any kind of moratoriums or anything else. We can keep moving forward.
So, as far as, and I guess this is going to be part of the financing question, what is, you know, current project or immediate project versus future? And it comes down to allocating costs. The plant today is 3 MGD. It'll be 3 MGD plus with the oxidation ditches, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, Mark can be more specific, but we won't get an increase. This is just to, actually, this is to avoid a reduction in our nameplate because if we aren't able to meet it, they're going to, they're going to reduce our ability to push through 3 MGD. So, these short-term improvements essentially keep our 3 MGD ratings so we can keep issuing building permits. We're right now at about 2.2...
Yes.
...million gallons, so still got a little bit of headroom there. But once you reach, is it 75 or 85% of your capacity, then they start restricting until you have a plan to get to the next step.
Right, as is recommended here, at 85%, you start on the next set of improvements, if I read that correctly.
Yes.
Well down the path on.
And that will be all on future customers, that will be all on future connection fees and such, not on current rate payers for that next section of building.
That's all for me.
Well, I want to say that that was a very good and very understandable presentation, so thank you very much for it. And I guess, are we going to close this now, go to closed session? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very much.
Thank you. It's very good.
It was a really good presentation. Oh, I'm just trying to think, do you want to take this with me? [inaudible]
Do you have anything to report back for closed session, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The city council is in closed session this evening, conference of legal counsel, existing litigation, and there's no action to report.
Thank you. And we have a little conference on it. Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Campion?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Howard?
Here.
Okay, we're going to have a moment of silent prayer and then we'll have Gwen lead us in the [inaudible]. Stay on your toes around here.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible] [inaudible]
Okay, council, do we have any agenda approval additions or deletions? Okay, no presentations, could you please leave public comments on? This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shorewest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Thank you very much, now I'm having to leave public comments. Under Government Close Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk. Thank you very much, speakers. Al Baldwin, please.
Well, this is quick tonight. Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, and it's a wonderful town with character. And I'm telling you now that it can get better, it always can get better. And my suggestion tonight, I've been asked by another person or persons to bring it up if I could. At night, Galt's beautiful if you could see it. Well, when you're pulling into town and it's 11 o'clock at night, you can't really see anywhere it says "Galt." So what we're suggesting, or I'm suggesting tonight, is for the council to consider putting lights on the Galt Tower so that you can see it from miles away. I may have said this before, but now I'm unfortunate. From a distance, you coming in off the freeway, you can see the tower. Going west, you can see the tower looking east almost. Anywhere about in town, within the, well, I'd say three-mile range maybe, you can see the tower on this side of the freeway. And if you're in a plane, you can probably see it from the plane maybe if you're flying over, which would be just wonderful. Anyway, I would like the council to think about this suggestion and how to improve the looks of Galt, which this would do. And if you have to have money for it, let me know how much. No, I'm not personally going to donate it, but I will see what I can do to find it. So it's just another idea to make Galt a better place, and we're all, we all have to lighten up sometime. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Okay, Donna, would you please read the information consent calendar? Item. Item one, subject, minutes of the special and regular meetings of June 4th, 2013. City of Galt warrants, approved purchase of two replacement air transit buses, landscaping and lighting district engineers reports, intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2013, 2014, and set public hearings. Transportation Development Act claim for fiscal year 2012, 2013, and amended claim for fiscal year 2011 and 2012. Thank you. Any comments, Al? Do I have a motion, please?
Motion, sir.
Second. Uh, vote call vote, please. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powell?
Aye. Now, we're at the city council office, we're to the strategic plan, and do we have it? Okay, let's go to the first page, please, Donna. Oh, there we go, somebody, who did that? Oh, okay. I didn't know where that came from. Okay, our three-year goal, enhanced economic development, by July 15th, 2013, the city manager will update the economic development roadmap and have it certified by the Federal Economic Development Administration as a CEDS, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy.
Sure, I can provide a brief update. We're making good progress on this, we had our second SEDS committee meeting last week, we had good attendance, we're in the process of prioritizing the major initiatives that will be in that plan and taking a look at the action items, again, prioritizing those. And we're gonna be putting together the draft plan and then coming back to the SEDS committee probably sometime middle of July. And the document has to be out for 30-day review for the public before it's certified, so we'll go through that kind of public review process or period for 30 days, and then we'll be able to get it certified through the federal government. And sometime in that process, actually, the city council for the SEDS committee and the process outlined by the federal government, the city council doesn't actually have to officially adopt the plan, it's a plan that's actually adopted by the SEDS committee itself, that's the process that's outlined. But we will bring it back to the council, give you a copy of it when it's released for kind of in-draft, in-draft form, for review by the public in general, and allow the council to make any comments as well as members of the public before the SEDS committee officially adopts it. So that'll probably be sometime in July, I guess, about a month from now. So, making good progress.
I'm glad to see you're moving along because it is a very important plan that we need. Okay, now we're at improved financial stability and maintenance of reserves. And we'll go to number three, by September 30th, 2013, community development director working with the senior building inspector and public works director, contingent upon timely receipt of plans from Walmart, issue the city permits for the Walmart project. Is this you, Sandy?
This is me. Good evening. On June 7th, community development, public works staff and the city's plan check staff held a lengthy conference call with Walmart's architectural team and their engineering team to discuss all the remaining plan check comments. They intended to resubmit, and we feel like we have all the issues resolved by June 17th, we haven't received them yet, we're still working out a couple minor little issues with them, so they are telling us any time now. Landscape racking, fire sprinkler and health department plans are already approved and ready to issue. And Steve notes that there's an early payment agreement for their traffic impact fees that will be executed upon award of the Twin Cities Roundabouts Project.
Thank you. Now, provide services and facilities that meet, that are responsive to the community's needs. And by July 1st, police chief is lead with council member Mike Singleton and the special projects administrator, recommend to the public safety committee and to the city council for direction, youth programs and funding options for at-risk youth.
So this one, I know both Vice Mayor Singleton's been working very hard and diligently in this and with cooperation of the chief, I believe there's a meeting coming up tomorrow, but maybe Vice Mayor, if you'd like to give an update to the council on the progress being made?
Absolutely. We've been, like you said, trying to get this movement along, it's taken some time with the police youth cooperation, we've made some tremendous progress. PAL, which is the Police Activities League, has formally board, and working with the school district and California Human Development, or CSD, they've received a $1.4 million grant for the next five years to be using the old Esterlita school buildings over there. And they're gonna allow PAL to use two of those buildings, along with, the police chief's gonna let us use some of the police department in the community rooms and that, for the PAL meetings. So we're moving right along, we're getting ready to file our 501(c)(3), and we will be bringing it to council here very shortly, I'm predicting maybe August. Chief, you have something to add? No?
Like the Vice Mayor said, we have a meeting tomorrow. Police athletically basically is to keep kids out of trouble by providing some kind of leadership sports and overall mentoring of kids to keep them out of trouble so they don't end up in gangs and all the rest of it. PALS are across the country, and we're gonna try to get one started here in the city of Galt.
Yeah, applaud you guys for your efforts, that's great, great, great news. And last but not least, improve community involvement and two-way communication. And by July 1st, 2013, the city attorney and human resources administrator will present to the city council for action a social, a city's social media policy. Is that you, Paula? Just a brief update, yes, we're in the final stages of that, it's, will be brought to council the second week, or the second meeting in July. So. Great, good, thank you very much.
Well, that was quick.
Okay. Now, the second subject is back to me again, and it's discretionary funds. And I want to rescind the approval, the prior approval of discretionary funds to the Canine, the Foothill Canine Association, and approve the money to go to the training account for the Galt Canine Program. And when I first had set up the money, it was for to get the dogs, but we already do have the dogs, so I would like my money to go to further whatever our dogs need. So I'm asking for council's approval for that money.
Do you have a motion on that?
Yes.
So move.
Call for the vote, please. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye. And the next one is discretionary funds, and that's you, Vice Mayor Singleton. And you want to rescind the prior approval of discretionary funds for police trading cards and approve the allocation of $500 to the training account for the Galt Canine Program.
Yes, we had planned on, we've had a little bit of turnover in our PD, so I wanted to rescind that $500 because we were gonna use baseball type cards, that what our police officers do and stats and all that, so I wanna bring that back and donate it to our Canine Program for Galt PD to help with equipment. We have two new dogs, and I wanna help that Canine part of the department as much as possible.
Okay, do I have a motion for that one?
Second. Second.
Call for the vote, please, Donna.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye. And now discretionary funds for Councilmember Payne, we're at the end of the year, can you tell? Approve the allocation of discretionary funds for FY 2013, '14 in the amount of $7.50 to fund a portion of the registration fee, $50 each for 15 students to attend the Globe Theatre Group summer classes in Galt. Okay, let me tell you why this is important to me and why I grabbed it when I heard about this being offered by our Parks and Rec Department. Some time ago, I had contacted the city clerk and asked her to get information to consider forming a arts and culture commission in Galt, like so many other cities have. And she put together a lot of information for me. For example, Oroville states the arts consisting of the general areas of visual performing and literal arts are a creative means of self-expression which contribute to the health and quality of life in a community. And I agree with that concept. Another city lost banners, which gets a little bit closer to where I am, in their ordinance, they state that, "Whilst the city council, the city of Los Banners, recognize the importance of fostering and appreciation for the arts and artists, creating and promoting public programs in the arts, and helping children in their development of creative skills and talents," and it goes on. And it just happened when we were interviewing our youth for the youth committee, some of them mentioned that they were interested in having something like Shakespeare in the park. Well, then, of course, our wonderful Parks and Rec Department was offering that for teenagers. The problem is, they only had maybe one person sign up, the fees for that were $95 to $180. So for most teenagers, that's a lot of money, so I thought I'd like to help them out. The other reason is, I have personal knowledge of a young man from Galt High School that was failing all of his classes, and he really wasn't interested in school, but he got involved in something called the color guard, and they require a B average. And because he found his niche with the color guard, he brought all of his grades up and was able to graduate. So I think, you know, we talk about ways to keep kids at risk from getting, getting in trouble, I think this might be another way that we could save a couple of kids. So I would like to use my discretionary money, if they're able to form this class, and they require 15 to make the class, to help these kids help pay for their fees. And that goes right along with the theme of tonight with Al, so do I have a motion?
Just for clarification too, that's using next year's money.
Can I have something real quick? So you're gonna, you're gonna wait, you're gonna have students sign up for this, is that how the 15 are gonna be chosen?
And it's, they're not chosen, it's the first 15.
Okay, just first 15.
Yeah, doesn't matter, anybody out in the public, it's not our youth committee members, it's not exclusively for them, it's for any of those kids, any of the students out there that feel like they would like to become future actors or learn about Shakespeare even, I think they're gonna do the painting of the shrew, which would be a good one. That's a good one. So can I have a motion, please?
So move. Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye. Now, we're at the city manager's office, we're gonna award a contract for purchase and installation of new voiceover IP, VOIP, telephone unified communications equipment.
It's a mouthful.
It is. Not as bad as the next one coming up.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Our IT coordinator, Matthew Marcott, is ill today, so I'm gonna be filling in for him and delivering this agenda item for the council's consideration this evening, I'll provide a little bit of a brief background. The city's current telephone system is about 11 years old, it was installed back in 2002, it is reaching the end of its life, the manufacturer, NEC, is no longer supports the parts, the materials necessary to, if we were to have a significant failure, we'd have a difficult time finding the parts necessary to replace it. Our current contractor that provides maintenance services has indicated that if some of these motherboards and things fail, that we would be, our system would be down, and it would take them probably weeks to try to scrounge up the parts necessary, just you can't find them anymore. And we have had smaller failures over the last 12 months where our voicemail systems have gone down for, luckily, it's only been for short increments, maybe a day at most, but we are at the end of the life, and so the council, if you recall back in January, I believe, approved a budget of $135,000, actually back in December.
December, sorry.
December, yeah, $135,000 to replace the phone system. So we hired a consultant, Tony Knowles, who's an expert in telecommunications systems, to help us prepare an RFP. We put the RFP for the phone system out on the street on May 7th, which was for a complete turnkey system using state-of-the-art native voiceover IP as the primary protocol, which is a kind of internet-based telephone system. You may have it at your own home, it's becoming more and more popular out there, there's a lot of different technologies in a lot of cities, corporations are migrating to these VoIP systems for a lot of reasons, reliability being one, flexibility being another, and I'll go in through some of the benefits of the new system that we're proposing in a second. But we had about eight companies that expressed interest in bidding on our, on our RFP. When we first sent it out, we had a meeting with the bidders that were interested, and I believe we had about six of them that showed up, so it seemed like we were gonna get a good response. Unfortunately, when the packets were open, we only got one. And the good thing is that it was from CMS, who's our existing maintenance contractor, and we've been very pleased with the support and services that they provide to us, but we were, we always, you know, looked and liked to have at least a couple of proposals to evaluate and make sure we're getting the best, the best deal we can possibly get. The original price that they quoted us was about $157,000. Through negotiation and, and we were able to reduce that amount to $126,000. So we feel good in the fact that we were able to reduce that in a significant way. We believe that even though we didn't get multiple bids, that this is the best proposal that we will likely get. We did contact some of the other companies to find out why they didn't bid, and some of them indicated that because they already knew we had a relationship with CMS, we already had a VoIP system out of our wastewater treatment plant, that we would likely, you know, it was a good possibility that we would just expand that current system, and they didn't want to expend the time, energy, money that it takes to put together a proposal for, in response to an RFP. And others indicated that, hey, timing just wasn't, wasn't right for them, they had a number of other projects that were in the queue, and they weren't able to meet the timeline requirements that we put in there. So for a variety of reasons, we didn't get a great response. But again, we are very familiar with CMS, we're very happy with CMS, they provide a good service for us, and so we are comfortable recommending the award of the contract to CMS in the amount of $126,000. Let me just go over a few of the brief advantages of the system, in addition to improved reliability and the brand-new technologies, so everything will be replaced, so we should be able to get hopefully another 10 or 11 years out of the new system. Things like six-way teleconferencing. Right now, if we wanna do more than just a couple of people on the line, we have to use an outside service, we have to go through AT&amp;T to do a multiple line, which costs extra money. So this, that technology's built in right, right from the start. A lot of different ways of looking at phone numbers, you'll be able to tell whether staff is on the line, no matter where they are in the city. There's built-in fax over a computer capabilities, right now you have to go to the fax machine, you gotta type in the number, and you gotta put the paper in there, and it goes through. Now you can do it right on your, on your computer, both receive and send faxes through your emails. You can have voicemails that come into your phone that you can forward into your computer if you wanted to archive voicemail, and now it gets, can get transferred. So essentially, your computer becomes an extension of, or your phone becomes an extension of your computer, things you can do. You can have, in the past, you know, you'd have your little buttons of your favorite lists and your, your speed dials and things, that can help you on your computer, you actually dial from your computer now. So a lot of integration with, with what we're seeing and the technology that we have. The other big advantage is a safety advantage, which is the ability to locate where 911 calls come from. Right now, if one of our staff puts in a 911 call, PD would only be able to locate the building. They wouldn't know that the call was coming from the back office or, or the wing out there, now they'll know exactly which handset that phone is coming from. So if there's an issue going on, they'll be able to better locate where that call is coming in from. Other things that staff may or may not like, which is called, a lot of different call forwarding rules. So if I'm gonna be gone, I could set up on my phone so that it'll forward automatically in the tree, so it'll go from here to maybe my cellphone, to my, you know, my daughter's phone, to whoever, wherever you want to set it, you can set up rules so that people can find you no matter where you are. Again, that's maybe a, not necessarily a good thing for staff, but we'll have to work on that and see how much of that technology we wanna utilize, but the capability is there, and so I think it's, you know, got some, some good possibilities. Fiscal impact, I already talked about, the purchase price is $126,000. Once the, the system is in place, there will be some reductions in costs. Right now, we maintain separate fax lines for our fax machine, we'll be able to take those out of service, we'll be able to reduce the cost on a monthly basis, in addition to, you know, paper and toner and all the things that go into maintaining a fax system, those will reduce our costs, so that's a positive thing. There is an alternative for the council to consider, which is to reject the CMS proposal and go back out to bid. We're not recommending that because we don't believe that we will get other proposals. If we do that, or if we did get other proposals, they won't be any more competitive, they won't be any less expensive than the proposal we have from CMS. There is one slight change in the resolution, I think we passed it out with you, to you this evening, we, the total budget- We, the, the, the total budget for the CIP is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we did spend some money on our consultant, uh, to provide, to prepare the RFP. Between the contract of CMS with a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars plus seven thousand dollars we spent on the consultant, that leaves nine, one thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars in the budget. We would like the Council to authorize a contingency of that amount of nineteen forty-eight that we could use if we need to make any other upgrades to the system as we go through. It's always nice to have a little bit of a cushion. We hadn't built that in here, but my recommendation is that you do adopt the revised resolution that adds a contingency of, of one thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars so that we can move forward with the project. Just one final note is that we won't be able to fully implement the system until we get the, uh, fiber optic line that's under construction right now, which I think we're currently scheduled for the end of July to have that in place. Um, but we'll proceed with, with moving forward on this, but we won't be able to be fully operational until after the fiber optic line is, is, is operational. So, having said that, the staff's recommendation is that the Council award a contract for purchase and installation of a new VoIP, voice-over internet protocol, telephone unified communication equipment, um, and adopt the, adopt the resi, sorry, adopt the resolution authorizing me to, uh, execute the contract with CMS in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and this is the revised resolution that adds a contingency of nineteen forty-eight.
Yeah, that's the City Council authorize a contingency in the amount of, okay.
Right.
Which is up to the total.
I'm happy to answer any questions that the Council might have. And here's, just, uh, not hooked up or anything, but here's a, this is one of the new phones. It's smaller, it uses less, um, energy, it's, it's more, uh, more efficient as well, so, um...
Uh, yeah, we got, pick a number from one to ten, no. Go ahead, you go first, and I'll start.
Uh...
Can we have a question on that, too? Before, uh, or...
Well...
I'm asking a question now, hold on a second, Al.
Yeah, hold on, Al.
The hundred and twenty-six thousand, um, and you talked about the conference calling, is that in, included in that if we want a conference call, say, ten people, is that gonna be an extra charge, like?
That would be included, I think it's up to six lines, that'll fix six different...
Okay, but anything more than six, then we're gonna have...
We'd probably have to go through an outside company, the way we do right now, right?
And, uh, to cancel the fax lines as we have them now, there's not gonna be any cost for that, I mean, we're not on contract or anything.
We'll just, we'll just save money, there's no contract, so as soon as we end up canceling, once the new system's in place...
Done, done.
Staff's trained in how to use it, then we'll cancel that and put the old, uh, fax machines out to pasture.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
And then, uh, Mark, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, go ahead, Al.
Al?
Oh.
Sure.
Good evening, my name's Ralph Cortez, I'm a new citizen to the, uh, to Galt, uh, just moved here in, uh, January and have been attending the meetings. Uh, I'd like to know a lot more about what's going in the community, and, uh, actually, uh, Liz, uh, talked to her, I met her at the shredding, um, event that they had. Anyway, just a quick question on the comment there. You talked about the fiber optic line, and I realize that that's, uh, almost, uh, like an umbilical cord to the system. Is there a countermeasure if, uh, loader, scraper, or somebody takes that line out, or just, I, I know that sometimes when they dig up the fiber optic line, that's kind of the fallacy of the system, it's so, uh, quick and unique and, and high-tech that, uh, essentially, if it gets taken out, will your operation be crippled?
That's a good question. Uh, right now, we do have a line, umbilical cord between City Hall and MSC, which is our Municipal Services Center, it's a T-one line, so it's not as fast as, as having a fiber optic, uh, connection. I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to maintain that line and have kind of dual redundancy in that, but the capability is there, exists, we do have a line now, so the fiber optics will be in addition to that. And again, I'm not, I'm not the, uh, you know, the technical expert on that, so I'm not, I'm not sure if we're gonna be maintaining that sec, secondary line, but it isn't, it is, we do have the ability to do that if we wanted to. There's just a cost involved in maintaining a second line.
And I would say that, you know, obviously, um, an operation of this size, um, you know, uh, reliance on a, I don't know, probably the thickness of your finger or something, you know, I'm not very well-versed in that, but I do realize that, uh, something of that technical capacity could, uh, could literally sever, uh, communications, uh, things of that sort, I don't, technical on that line, but just a observation, what I heard struck a chord. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Galt.
That was actually part of my question, so it makes mine a little easier. Uh, probably Matt's question, but I'll throw it at you anyway.
Sure.
You're saying we can send faxes and so forth with the system, do with our existing fax systems, that's all well and good, if we're communicating via our computers. Once in a while, we'll get information from a, a citizen or so forth that we need to send out to others, you know, fax. Are we still gonna have the capability of scanning those documents, if we can still send them? How are we gonna, how are we going to achieve this goal?
Yeah, we, we still have, uh, scanning capabilities regardless of the fax machines, we have, our copiers have scanning capabilities, so you'll be able to scan a document, have it sent to your computer, and then you can do whatever you want with it. Once it's electronic, you could fax it from your computer, you could email it, you could do anything you want. And when somebody faxes to you, instead of it printing out, you know, on a fax machine, it'll come into a designated, uh, box, or somebody's, you know, account on their computer. Each department will probably have a designated person that would receive the electronic faxes, and so that electronic fax would come into that designated location, and they would check it and either delete it or forward it on to whoever it wanted to go to.
And going back to that gentleman's question, one of the things I asked Matt about when he first brought up the, uh, the fiber optics, knowing how they're laid, I, my, my suggestion was, and it still is out there, I don't know what the cost is gonna be, somehow enclosing it in concrete. I know a lot of times AT&amp;T has what they call a honeycomb that they run it through.
Maybe, uh, Trung is our project manager on the fiber optics line, he's not here, but I don't know if, if Steve or Gwen, are you guys capable of speaking to the location of the fiber optics? My understanding is most of the line is run under the sidewalk, which, which I think makes it less likely that it would be hit by a backhoe, but I don't know to that, to any other extent, you know, what the...
Well, that's correct. Um, as far as encasing it in concrete, we're actually putting it in a high-density polyethylene conduit or tube, uh, but it's going in with trenchless technology, so there's no way to backfill with concrete or pour concrete, otherwise we'd be tearing up two thousand feet of street, um, and running, running the costs up. We're in no more peril with the new state-of-the-art system than we are with the existing, we just have a smaller cable, uh, but it is in, in a, in a, not a rigid conduit, but in a, a tough-jacketed, uh, polyethylene conduit, similar to the material that PG&E uses for the gas mains, so it's pretty durable stuff. Uh, it is a little more flexible than some other rigid conduits, so if you, if you don't slice through it, you, you can survive a, a ding. Uh, we also are burying above it, um, a warning tape, so if you're digging, you'd hit the warning tape, which would say fiber optic cable, a foot before you'd actually hit our conduit. Uh, there is an exposure there, uh, but no more so than we have today with the cold landlines.
Um, you know, you can, you can repair the fiber optic line, so if it gets hit, yeah, it will be down, but it wouldn't be weeks. We could get a crew out and, and fix it and repair it relatively.
Yeah, we're installing pull boxes about every five hundred feet or so, and putting a loop of fiber in those so that if we did get a hit somewhere between pull boxes, you would go in and terminate and put a new, whatever they call their fiber connections, uh, splicing at each pull box and just replace that four hundred feet piece to get us back up. Now, that could take days, uh, it's an emergency contract, but, uh, the technology is out there.
And like you said, it's no different than what we have now. I mean, it's different, but they could both get hit.
Yeah.
Any more?
Yeah, um, I know that the report says you've had two outages over, in the last twelve months, and then it, and then it goes on to state that, you know, so that signs of losing failure. Um, I, I guess, um, and I know it's eleven years old, can you talk a little bit more about the existing contractor who maintains it, what, they're not able to get parts, or, or what is the issue there?
Matt would be able to speak to this better than I am. We've, we've been looking at this actually for, for a couple of years, it's kind of been one of those things that's in the back of your mind as a, as a risk that you know, because the contractor has said that, and it's, not all the whole system, but there's certain pieces of the system that they no longer manufacture, the manufacturer no longer supports. So, that, you know, if, if that piece, or pieces, failed, that it could be a very, very long time before we're able to, to get something in, in place. And again, I'm not the, you know, the, the expert, I don't know, you know, because one of the thoughts is, okay, well, why can't we kind of try to find that piece and put it in, you know, storage somewhere? I don't think it's as simple as that, and talking with the, the current contractor we have, we actually had a contractor before CMS, we only had CMS for about two years. The contractor, the maintenance provider we had before that, almost refused to even support our system because they didn't wanna assume any risk. They said, hey, this system is so old, it's so in risk of failure, that we don't want any liability on us, and so they, we kind of severed that relationship. We found CMS was the only company that would come in and support it, but they supported it with the caveat that if these things fail, you're on your own. So...
Okay, okay.
So, that's a risk.
Oh, yeah, it is a risk, I, and I understand, I understand, and, and, you know, it isn't that detailed, there's an explanation in the report. Um, is there any cost savings, um, associated with this system over the existing system other than, because nothing, nothing is enumerated in the report.
Operational.
Yeah, either operational, or, or monthly, or annual, are there any costs associated with that? I know it talks a little bit about, you know, toner, the paper, the fax lines, but that's pretty insignificant, I would...
The maintenance contract is similar, so the current contract we have with CMS as far as maintaining the new system, it's pretty similar. Uh, we would be, we will be able to eliminate some lines, some fax lines, um, so that that, that cost won't be there in the future, so, you know, a couple hundred dollars a month, you know, so a couple thousand dollars a year maybe in savings.
Not really significant.
You know, nothing real significant, yeah.
That's a lot for telephones.
It is a lot, yeah.
You get a lot more bells and whistles with the system, but, you know...
The main reason for doing it isn't the extra capabilities of the system, it really is to, you know, kind of eliminate that risk or reduce the risk out of the system.
I've had that personally happen with an organization I work with, and it gets really tough with the phones when they get old and nobody will come out and work on them. I mean, you just have to sometimes, like, you need to get a new refrigerator, you need to get a new phone. I mean, it's just the way it goes, it goes sometimes.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, one question, though, can this line be detected? Because I know if you're gonna be digging, there's a phone number you can call, and they come out and they flag where there is a gas line or something.
Yeah, this will be a, fiber optic is not related to the phone system, other than it will be able to take advantage of the high-speed data connectivity. But the fiber optic line that's going in as we speak, uh, um, again, we're putting that tape in, which can be detected, it's a metallic tape, uh, but we're also, uh, able, I believe there's a trace wire that's gonna go in with the conduit. Uh, I'll need to double-check that nuance, but, uh, in any event, it will be part of the USA Call Before You Dig program, but it is a city-owned line, so much like city sewer, water, storm drain, our crews will have to market it instead of AT&amp;T marking a phone line or Softcom, uh, it'll be our crews that'll be marking that. But the good news is, with all the pull boxes and straight lines, we know right where it is. And it's out of the street, for the most part.
And I had one question about our, um, agreement for the purchase of goods. Um, it says, "The city is relying on the vendor's skill and judgment in selecting and providing the proper goods for city's particular use. The goods shall be in all respects suitable for the particular purpose for which they are purchased, and the goods shall be merchantable." I think I said that right. It bothers me a little bit when we have all of this, um, trust on somebody else, where our IT people be able to, um, kind of take a look at it, or we just putting it all on the vendor?
No, I, we're gonna be, you know, integrally involved in, in the installation, monitoring the installation, and the other thing about it is CMS is going to be maintaining the system once it's installed, so they have a vested interest in making sure the installation is done right, the equipment is reliable, because they don't get, they don't get paid based on the number of visits that they come, it's a flat amount per year, and so if they make one visit or twenty visits, um, we're paying them the same amount. So, it's, it's in their best interest to, again, install a system that's gonna be reliable, that's gonna be able to be maintained easily, and so, um, we think between our own kind of knowledge of, of telephone systems and, and technology and kind of keeping an eye on, on what they're doing, and when we, and we also relied on this individual that helped prepare the RFP, um, he put specific specs in the RFP, so we make sure we're getting the best technology that we can, that we can get.
Yeah, okay, something I had on, that, actually, that's good language. Um, a lot of times when we buy goods, the people that we buy it from try to disclaim any warranties as it relates to the, uh, the goods, and so that language was put in there to preserve the warranties that come along with the purchase of the equipment.
So, it's a good thing?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any more comments, thoughts, questions? Uh, could you please raise these actions? Recommended action, or you already did, didn't you? Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Yes.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye. All right, now we're to the Public Works Department. Approval of sequoia addendum to adopt, adopted mitigated, mitigated negative declaration for Twin Cities Road Widening Project and Award of Contract for the Twin Cities Roundabouts and Widening and Award of Contract for Construction Support Services and Construction Management Services Related to the Twin Cities Widening Project. That's one, correct?
Good evening, Gwen will be making a presentation, but if you think that was a mouthful, we've got two resolutions approving eleven actions. Since I've been here, that might be a record, but, uh, they're all the pieces of this complex project, which include agreements with Walmart and other things for funding and, and agreements, future agreements to be finalized with, uh, Jack County to help us pay for it, but without stealing any more of Gwen's thunder here, Gwen, why don't you give us the brief version of those eleven actions?
Okay, basically, this is for the award of the construction contract for the Twin Cities Roundabouts and the widening. As you can see over to your right, um, there's a graphic that shows the roundabouts and the widening. Um, basically, the improvements will be from west of West Stockton to east of Frumway. Um, it should be noted that the roundabouts are an interim improvement to add capacity to Twin Cities Road at State Route Ninety-nine. The Twin Cities Roundabouts was put out to bid in April, um, and the widening was added by addendum. Six bids were received. The lowest bid came from George Reed, which was just over six point six million dollars, which was approximately a hundred, um, one million dollars over the engineer's estimate. And in a manner for the city to be able to deal with that million dollars, um, over the engineer's estimate, the city initially went to Sacramento County and asked them for additional contributions. In addition to the hundred and twelve thousand dollars that the county was already contributing for landscaping within their right-of-way, they agreed to contribute an additional three hundred thousand. Additionally, staff, Omni Means, SOMAS, and SOMAS worked with Caltrans, the county, and then also the contractor to determine what other modifications could be made to the plans or eliminations to actually reduce costs. Um, project reductions that we were able to agree on were modifications to roadway sections, modifications to pipe, and changing out some materials. Um, in addition, we worked with the contractor to actually, um, have some associated road closures. The road closures would be a reduction in both hay rail and crash cushion costs in addition to temporary striping and pavement work. At this time, we've identified approximately four hundred and seven, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of reductions to the project. In addition, there are several other modifications that Caltrans has agreed to, but we have not determined a firm price with the contractor yet. It's estimated that this would come to at least another two hundred thousand dollars in savings. Uh, staff is additionally working with Caltrans to reduce some additional street lighting for the roundabout. Um, this item won't be resolved prior to the contract being executed, but would be an additional, uh, change order that we would have. Staff is recommending that the contract be fully funded with the transfer from the Mezzera Fund Balance and the Annual Pavement Rehab Program. Any project savings that this project have will be transferred back at the end of the back at the end of the project to the appropriate accounts. In addition to the contract award, there is an amendment to Omni Means and SOMAS's contracts to include the Twin Cities Round, excuse me, the Twin Cities Widening. Their original contract only addressed the roundabouts. And Omni Means would be providing design support, and SOMAS would be providing construction management. If the contract is approved with George Reed, we expect George Reed to start construction by the end of August. The original number of working days is approximately 170 working days. But with the project staging, and the contractor's desire to complete the project, staff is hoping for a much shorter construction schedule. The shorter construction schedule would also result in changes for both CM costs and potentially additional cost savings from George Reed. Basically, that's the end of my brief presentation, so I'm available for questions.
Do you have a couple?
Of course.
Go ahead.
Shall I start?
Go ahead.
Okay, one of the cost-saving measures that was proposed was to be working at night?
Correct.
Okay, in what hours are you talking about, at night?
Basically, what they would be doing is, George Reed has initially expressed the desire to work around the clock, and this is specifically for the roundabouts. So when we actually have the road closures, they'd be phased within the quadrants, and they would be closed 24 hours a day for, you know, a certain number of days. And if it works for their crews, and there's not additional cost associated with that, that they would basically work 24 hours a day. Those specific hours have not been identified, but there is the desire for them to do that.
I'm going to ask for your indulgence. We have someone in the audience who wants to say something, so I'm going to let them go first, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay. Rick, come on back. Oh, no. I mean, I'm sorry. Dan, come on down.
Dan Jimenez, and I live in the city. My question's for you, I guess. What do you figure the total amount for this project is going to be?
A total amount for construction costs, or for number of days?
Start to finish, the cost.
You're talking cost.
Yeah.
It's currently, the bid is $6.6 million. We are looking to reduce it. It'll probably be, the county's contributing an additional six, excuse me, $300,000, so we're looking to reduce it about another $700,000. So it would be approximately $6 million would be the actual construction cost.
Yeah, and you don't know what Sacramento County's going to contribute to that, yet, right?
No, they've already, they've additionally, initially, they agreed to $112,000 for the landscaping within their right-of-way. When they, when we talked to them about the deficit that we had, they agreed to $300,000, an additional.
Additional.
Correct.
Yeah, just one more question. I didn't hear a contingency of $7 million and change. So is that your plus and minus number?
Typically, what happens is, when you have a construction contract, you have 10% contingency on that, to deal with unforeseen or unknown items. Because whenever you do work in an area that is, has work done there before, you don't know exactly what to encounter. Sometimes there's a benefit to add some additional work that benefits the whole project. So that's to deal with those unforeseen or unknown issues, basically.
So get run anywhere from six, 6.6 to somewhere around $7 million?
Basically, what would happen is, whatever the contract, contract dollar amount comes to, that contingency will change to about 10% of that. So basically, we'd be looking at, oh, probably about a $6 million construction contract, approximately, with $600,000 of contingency.
Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Sorry, Dan.
Dan, I think that, Dan, the whole project, Dan, the whole project, the whole project, and I think the number you were looking at was the 7.3 million, 7.29?
Yes.
That's the roundabouts, the widening, and the 10% contingency. So I don't know, did you understand it as that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I got that coming. Thank you.
To add one other thing, when the staff report was actually written, we didn't know where we were with dollar savings with the contractor. The $475,000 I just received on Friday, I received additional information from Omni Means today, so we've been working...
It's still moving.
It's been a moving target.
Gwen, the 475, was that from the changes we made based on Caltrans and county reductions, or is that from the staging changes?
Those are both.
Okay, it's a combination.
In this, for the staging, do you know how many days that would involve with the 24-hour?
Basically, depending upon what stage you're in, will dictate how many days within each quadrant. It's phased within each quadrant to minimize the impacts to the traveling public. The number of days, and this is just an estimate, because once again, we've been working with the contractor, and they're trying to get all their subs on board. They would range from anywhere from two days to 30 days. And we basically, I initially talked with Galt Village, I was with them in a different meeting, brought up the issue, and they basically said, just let us know what the information is, as long as our trucks can get in, we know what the information is, we can publish something to our customers, so they know what to expect. So I told them, once we had a better idea of what staging we were going to have, when, we'd meet with them multiple times to basically convey that information to them.
And when you say quadrant, are you dividing each one of the roundabouts into four quadrants?
Basically, it's like East Stockton and Twin Cities.
Right.
The northeast quadrant, the southeast quadrant.
Just four, four quadrants?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
If I might just add, the closures might, in some cases, go up thirty days. That doesn't mean we're going to be working around the clock thirty days straight at night. What good news is, we're not driving piles, we're not breaking concrete. Generally, we're moving dirt and asphalt, which, while you could still get some backup noises, and you've got rollers and trucks and earth moving, it's not quite the, you know, the noisy bridge construction type, keep you up all night kind of project. I remember when they did I-5 work in Stockton, they were breaking pavement at night along residential neighborhoods and corridors, and that was horrific. There will be impacts, primarily commercial in the roundabouts quadrant, and that's where most of the night work, I think, would go on, is the dirt work. The widening of Twin Cities Road is pretty much just straight blow-and-go paving, you know, and that's where most of the residents are on the north side. I don't think there's going to be a major impact, and that probably isn't the work they do at night. But you do get an upside for that little bit of dust and pardon our dust type night noise. That is, we'll have much less traffic conflicts during the daytime.
I could just add one thing. There is a section of the widening in the vicinity of Frumway that it would be closed, not 24 hours a day, but would be closed for approximately, would be closed at night for approximately a week. The purpose of that would be to minimize the driving impacts to the public, so that's why that widening would be closed. But it would just, that widening would be from like 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, so to minimize impacts to the traveling public. The roundabouts itself is really what they're looking at, closing for anywhere from two to thirty days, depending upon how they can phase it. That's where they would be doing their night work, if possible. In that vicinity, there's not as many sensitive receptors as there are for the widening section.
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Singleton, were you through, Barker?
I had one, another question. I have to ask this. Who was the engineer, or what was the company that missed the, was you?
It was Omni Means. And actually, there's, there's several reasons for why this happened, because I talked with Ron about it. The first thing is, we, you know, the economy is recovering. Now, the economy is recovering, we're hitting rising costs for constructions, and we're chasing the construction costs. That's part of it. The second part of it is, we bid the project a little late in the season. The roundabouts were ready to go, but we held off on the roundabouts, and then added, excuse, the roundabouts were ready to go, we held off on the roundabouts a little bit, and then added the widening, because we were desperately trying to get the widening to catch up to the roundabouts, because of the fact of the benefit that we would receive to have it, one contractor, just sort of the coordination, and then the benefits, the entire improvement. And then the other item was, there's some specialty items that were put in, that that's one of the things that we're looking at doing reductions. Like, for example, one of the items that we're working, Caltrans has agreed to, but we haven't gotten the cost yet associated for it, was, Caltrans had spec, special type of fencing to go over the Twin Cities Bridge. That fencing came in very expensive. We've subsequently worked with Caltrans and agreed upon a cheaper fencing, but we just haven't, we just got that agreement, and we haven't been able to circle back to the contractor, and the contractor gave us a price yet. So some of those specialty items, we've been working with Caltrans to actually modify. In addition, the sculptures, even though they're beautiful, they are specialty items, too. So there's a few items like that.
Now, I thought the county was going to pay for the landscaping, but yet we're talking about doing away with the landscaping?
No, actually, the county, the county is contributing the cost for the landscaping within their right-of-way, which is $112,000. So when we talked about what to reduce, we weren't touching that, because if we, if we touched it, or took anything out, they would just contribute less. So basically, as an option, the council could choose not to do landscaping, and could choose not to do the sculptures. At the time of the staff report, basically what we recommended was to have funds transferred from both Measure A and the Annual Pavement Rehab to cover the deficiencies, and also cover that cost with the hope that we would be able to close this gap through these modifications to the project. Where we stand right now, we are very close to closing the gap without taking out the landscaping or the sculptures.
And my final question is, we're taking funding away from the pavement rehab. What will the effect of that be? Are we going to be, you know, driving over potholes?
Well, basically, if we are able to close the gap, as much as we're able to close the gap, we will be able to pay back what we've been able to save back to those, both to Measure A Fund Balance and the Annual Pavement Rehab. Additionally, there's the opportunity to potentially apply for grants through SEACOG for road rehab, and we are working with staff to determine what roads would be most competitive in that realm. And we're meeting with SEACOG later this month to do that, too. Thank you.
The way the, the way the staff report is worded, and the resolution is worded, is we're only going to transfer funds from the road rehab project in the event that we needed to close that gap. And it looks like we're pretty close. We may not need to transfer the money, or if we do, it may only be a small amount of the money.
Worst-case scenario is, it wouldn't be, mean that we don't get a project. It means we might have to delay it by six months until subsequent years' funding came in. But as Jason's pointed out, and Gwen has mentioned, we're fairly optimistic. We're going to close the majority of the gap, and therefore have very minimal impact on our ability to move forward with the project.
Would you know by next meeting to give a verbal report where you stand with regard to the contract?
What?
And costs?
Not 100%.
Okay. Well, I guess my point is, at some point, when you do know, I think we should report that out here, again. It's just a verbal report. It doesn't, I think it's a benefit for the, for the audience, and I'd like to know as well.
And we can add that in the weekly report that we put on our website, and the council, you know, as we have more information, we can just keep updating that number, and see how close we get to that, closing that gap.
And see, one of the items, like, for example, the street lighting, it's going to be a longer-term item for us to actually figure out. The thought is, what we want to do is, we want to execute the contract with George Reed, get them rolling, get the notice received, because every day we wait, we're closer to the rainy season.
Well, and prices are probably going up.
Every day we wait.
Hey, I just have to ask, it seems weird that we're signing a contract, but we don't know for sure that we have the money. Why, why are we so comfortable with that?
Yeah, the recommended actions will fully fund the project.
Okay.
It's, but we might be doing so at the expense of a future project. We had extended discussions with the city manager, and this is such an important gateway project, and we've got a million dollars of Caltrans funding, another million-plus of Walmart funding, early payment agreements, that our recommendation would be that, and Twin Cities has such a congestion problem, even though it's not directly a city problem, future projects in our general plan are going to need those improvements. And we think it's probably in the city's best interest to take that risk, and then we'll work real hard to close the gap. And if there's a slight delay in repairing some potholes, you know, we'll live along for one more year.
Wasn't the, the million dollars from Caltrans that risk anyway, from a timeframe? Did I understand that, or is it...
Yeah, I think in the agreement that we have with Caltrans, we have specific timeframe that we have to complete those improvements. I can't remember exactly what they are.
We went to CTC in March, and we have six months to award the contract.
Okay.
If we were in jeopardy, we could ask for an extension up to a year, but then there's a whole host of other issues that we're going to run into.
Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead.
Just, just a question. It says in here that, or you even mentioned that you helped cut costs by the material for the bridge rail. I see there's going to be reducing the number of streetlights. What are you going to anticipate while I'm asking? Well, no, that's good, that's, you know how I am.
Basically, the roundabouts are a relatively new, how should you say, transportation project for Caltrans. When Caltrans does street lighting, they do street lighting based upon a four-way or three-way intersection, and they light the conflict points. Well, on a roundabout, there's a lot of conflict points, and so there's a lot more lighting than, in our opinion, that is needed. But Caltrans was challenging on this particular issue, and so to be able to have the plans approved, we moved forward with it, not realizing what the cost implications were going to be, to the extent. Subsequently, we've talked with Caltrans to say, you know, we really need to go back and look at this. It's in the process of being moved up the chain of command. Currently, right now, District Two has, roundabouts are under construction right now. We're hoping that they will be constructed, and the lighting, which is significantly less than our lighting, will be completed in a very timely manner, so that we could basically point to that roundabout, to say, see, that's, that is lit enough for safety reasons.
Is it LED lighting?
It's all LED lighting.
Okay.
The issue is, is that it's a new type of product to Caltrans, and they're not familiar with how to light a roundabout. That's really what the issue comes down to.
And bridge rail?
There's fencing over the Twin Cities Bridge.
Yes.
And basically, that, that material that was picked, was specifically picked from Caltrans, it was just very expensive. So we're just changing out the type of fencing that goes there. Caltrans has agreed to it. It's just a matter of, we need to work with the contractor to see what the price change would be.
So it's not going to be, the change of the pipe is not necessarily a lesser strength of rail? It's still rated at the same...
It's acceptable by Caltrans. It's, it has the same safety factors associated with it. It does the same thing the other material did. It's just the other material was a specialty item.
Maybe to help with the context is, I can't be off the record, but among us chickens here, Caltrans has a condition of getting their million dollars, and getting the encroachment permits, for lack of a better term, extorted a number of items that we felt were guilted lilies. And so in a sort of a backwards sort of way, this overrun is a little bit of a blessing in disguise, in that to get the project that they want, to help their operational concerns, they're willing to back off on some of these guilted lilies, and maybe come back to earth and give us some reasonable product. And we're still having those discussions, but so far, it's looking favorable.
Well, that was kind of my little reading between the lines type of thing, while I was asking the question. Thank you for your information. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
Actually, I'd like to ask my question, but going back to SEACOG, when are you going to be meeting with them?
It's, I think it's the 27th that we actually meet with them. They, they have three, they have their grant funding projects, but there's three categories. They had an initial meeting earlier this month. I think it was June 12th that I was there. Initially spoke to them. They're actually coming down to Galt to help us strategize on which projects would be most competitive for the, each of the pots of money.
I didn't want to make sure wasn't stepping on your toes, because I already talked him mad about this up there. He was, I guess, his people weren't communicating properly to him what we wanted over there, as far as roundabouts are concerned?
The grant funding from SEACOG that I was talking about is, is for a different pot of money. We did, we did go to SEACOG and request some funds from SEACOG. It, in the timeframe, it wasn't going to work. They, they do have a pot of discretionary funds, but they don't have policy on how to use it. Apparently, they're going to the board in August on how those funds could be used. So they didn't have any of the policies, procedures set up for us to take advantage of that for this, for the roundabouts.
Working on it.
Correct.
Wow, they didn't have any procedures for discretionary funds. That's kind of crazy. Okay. Councilmember Campion?
I'm done.
Okay, well, Donna, I'm going to have you read the first one, and then, do we do them separately, or do we do them all together?
We can do them separately.
Okay. Then you can take a deep breath for the second one.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm, I'm helping Donna tonight, so...
Okay, help Donna.
I'm going to pass them the one. So the first, first motion... So the first motion is to adopt a resolution to approve an addendum to the initial study, mitigating negative declaration for the Twin Cities Road Widening Project and approve a revised mitigation monitoring reporting program.
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Donna.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
And the number two?
Second motion in one breath.
This will be good.
To adopt a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one with Omni Means Engineers in the amount of $71,583 for construction support services for the Twin Cities Widening. Authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one with SOMAS in the amount of $320,100 for construction management services for the Twin Cities Widening. Authorize funding contingencies of $7,200 for Omni Means Contract and $32,000 for the SOMAS Contract to address any needed contract amendments. Appropriate $1,715,393 from traffic impact fees, Fund 011. Fund balance to CIP 58P 050, Twin Cities Interim Widening Roundabouts at SR 99 and Widening. Appropriate from FY 2013-2014, Fund 29. Measure A, fund balance $210,000. Appropriate expenditures and revenues in the amount of $482,000 from Sacramento County and Caltrans contributions. Authorize the transfer of $213,280, Fund 9, and $254,689 from Fund 29, from FY 2013-2014 Annual Pavement Rehabilitation Program, CIP Number 57I, to the Twin Cities Interim Widening Roundabouts at SR 99 and Widening, CIP Number 58P. Authorize the city manager to execute a contract with George Reed Incorporated for the construction of the Twin Cities Interim Widening Roundabouts at SR 99 and Widening, CIP 58P. And a 10% project contingency in the amount of $7,292,63. Authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Sacramento County for their contribution to the Twin Cities Interim Widening Roundabouts at SR 99 and Widening, CIP Number 58. And finally, authorize the public works director to accept the improvement and issue the notice of completion upon completion of the work.
Good job, Steve. Good job, Steve.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
And I just want to say that, just by reading the addendums, you know that you guys put a lot of hard work into that, and we want to thank you for everything you've done. We're anxious to see it to get started, and it took a lot of putting the pieces of the puzzle together. Okay. Now, to the award of landscape maintenance contracts and related budget adjustments. And that would be you, Mr. Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. We're passing around a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, and that'll be to you momentarily. You'll find my copy. This item is a request that you authorize a multi-year contract with Professional Landscape Solutions Incorporated in the initial annual amount of $135,000. And second, that you authorize a multi-year contract with Proceda Landscape in the initial annual amount of $171,240. Third, that you approve position allocation changes to reclassify an existing parks maintenance supervisor position to a parks maintenance worker three position with a Y rate salary protection. And that you also delete two parks maintenance worker one-two positions, one of which is vacant, and at the same time, add one public works maintenance worker two position, which would be a promotional opportunity for one of the other two positions being eliminated. Lastly, we would ask that you appropriate, actually not lastly. Fourth, that you appropriate $45,469 from Fund 007, which is the wastewater fund, to fund the new public works maintenance worker two position, which would allow then elimination of a vacant temporary position as well. And the last recommendation would be that you approve the related budget adjustments affecting five different funds, which would, as shown on this slide, would result in a net budget decrease for 2013-14 fiscal year of approximately $96,874. Now, by way of background, and we'll give a little more detail on some of those recommendations, as you're aware, current landscape services are provided under an agreement with Professional Landscape Services Incorporated. That agreement was entered into in 2008, and will, after three extensions approved by council, will be expiring next week. We are faced with fixed revenues from our lighting and landscape districts, as well as general fund revenues in our Parks and Rec Department. And those fixed revenues, when contrasted with rising costs over the last five years, are threatening service levels within those landscape lighting districts and the Culture and Recreation Fund, as well as the viability to continue providing the current level of service. Obviously, when costs exceed revenues, you're faced with some fundamental options, either reduce costs, or you reduce levels of services, or you raise, find a way to raise fees or revenues. As part of looking at this, we identified some possible contract savings earlier this year that might be achieved through piggyback contracting, and primarily, we were looking to consume this community services district. But when you start looking at redefining how you provide services, we wanted to have somebody take an independent look, so it's not just sort of an internal inbred solution that we'd be looking at, but wanting to look at best practices among other cities and districts, as well as making sure we're providing the right levels of service compared to what sort of the standard of care is for municipalities. So we brought in the Municipal Resource Group, and they did provide a, we contracted with them to take an independent look at how to provide the optimal service levels and provide options for how we might best provide future landscape services before we entered into a procurement of an extended set of contracts. They did look at the city's current practices and costs. They identified seven options and provided some analysis on the cost benefits for those seven options. They also then provided recommendations for providing optimal service levels and pricing. And the bottom line was that they recommend that the city consider expanding the use of contracted services for the routine maintenance services in its parks and streetscapes, as well as some open space services that are provided, and utilize city staff to provide other services within the city. They then took a look at some various contracting options and determined that doing piggyback contracting with Elk Grove for parks maintenance services could provide a cost advantage over the current pricing. And second, that we might continue pursue a modified contract with our current provider for pricing, for providing streetscape services within the city. We solicit interest from those two contractors. But Proceda is the parks contractor for Consumers, sorry, Consumers Community Services District, CCSD, and to see if they would be willing to extend that piggyback pricing to Galt. And they came back and said, yes, if, yes, that they would be willing to provide the same level of services at a reduced pricing, provided that we don't just contract, we were proposing 19 of the 21 parks and keeping our premier sports facilities under city maintenance. They came back and said, to be able to provide that pricing, we would need to also provide services for those two sports parks. And so they said, we're willing to give the price, but only to get all 21 parks. We then proceeded to talk to our current contractor, Professional Landscape Solutions, and inquire if they'd be willing to honor their prices. If the parks were taken out of their contract, would they still honor their pricing for streetscapes and open space? And they said, no, if we take the economy at scale, the parks out of the equation, that they couldn't provide that price. But they then unsolicited came back and said, but we would provide it for this price. We then had our independent consultant look at that pricing, and he said, you know, that is cheaper than the, just earlier this year in December, CCSD went out for a new competitive bid with much more square footage of streetscapes than we have, and that price came in well under their combined price that they're receiving for streetscapes. So in looking at that, we said, that's still a heck of a deal for the city. We'd save money on the parks, and we'd get a better deal than what Elk Grove was able through CCSD to procure at a much smaller square footage price. So we're recommending that, at this point, that we proceed with those two contracts. The implementation plan would be to utilize Professional Landscape Services to provide streetscapes and open space and non-park facilities. That would be building landscape maintenance, City Hall, the Municipal Service Center, PD, Chebola Center, Library, et cetera. When we talk about non-park facilities, it would be our building landscaping. That would also incorporate some best practice language that would provide enhanced levels of service, piggybacking on the CCSD contract language, which would increase fertilization by 50%, three instead of two for that price, and that they would pick up irrigation checks and sprinkler repairs, which currently we're paying extra for under our current contract or doing with our forces. That would be included in that lower price, and that the contractor would also be responsible to monitor and program the sprinkler controllers under our streetscapes, which currently we're providing with city staff. Secondly, that we utilize Proceda to provide the city landscape services at all 21 city maintained parks, using the piggyback specs and pricing that CCSD was available. And again, that gets you an extra fertilization per year and provides irrigation and sprinkler repair with the city provided the materials for that. But an enhanced value added would be that as part of that CCSD contract piggyback, we'd get a monthly cleaning of the tennis courts, which is currently an extra, and they would monthly clean all of the playground equipment at all 21 parks embedded within that lower price. So both contracts are proposed to have an initial term of 24 months to allow them to amortize the costs of absorbing those new services, and then would include the option, city's exclusive option to extend three additional one-year terms if we're satisfied with the service and the pricing. Those out year beyond the first year would include an annual CPI adjustment to give you a sense, just this past April, the CCSD contract, so we're piggybacking on that term. That CPI was less than 2% in the past year. That, we would get that price starting July 1, and would see our next adjustment in July 1 of 2014 if approved. The third recommendation is that we continue to utilize, the third implementation piece, continue to utilize existing staff to provide the routine daily park maintenance that we're providing today, opening and closing bathrooms and sports facilities, cleaning the bathrooms, cleaning the picnic areas daily, trash, debris, litter, emptying trash receptacles, providing irrigation, pipeline and valve repairs, which are not the sprinkler and riser repairs that we mentioned earlier. That'd be if we have a mainline rupture, that we would provide those services as we do today. That would also pick up graffiti and vandalism repairs and special event setups and tear downs, such as our forthcoming July 4th, the Independence Day celebration. This would also free up staff to provide enhanced sewer system cleaning and make that a priority, and we would be able to make that more of a year-round program. Right now, we're short staff, and only when we have extra staff available are we pursuing that. The recommendation to create the Streets Division Maintenance Worker Two would let us pretty much take that to be more of a full-time project with our new VACTR, and that is having some very dramatic improvements on sewer overflows and clog situations, so we want to keep that program moving forward. It would also then free up some part-time and temporary staff to help us provide some of the quarterly and monthly deep cleaning janitorial and building maintenance services that we're just not able to provide today. So we'd basically be sort of redeploying both temporary and part-time staffing to do that in addition to the full-time staff changes that we talked about. So, bottom line, if you approve our recommendations, we're sort of seeing the following net sort of savings or impacts. We appreciate approximately $97,000 in annual cost savings. There are some ancillary savings that we've yet to put a number to, and we'll sort of see how it goes. These savings would include a variety of savings that will, we've got a detailed table within your staff report that talks about the labor savings, the professional services costs. Those would actually increase, but we'd offset that with labor, fertilizer costs and other savings that we would accrue by not having to fund that with our own forces. We'll get increased levels of sewer maintenance services. We'll get improved levels of janitorial and building maintenance services through the redeployment of some of our temporary and part-time staff. It would involve reclassification of one position, which would involve basically freezing the salary of a parks maintenance supervisor, reclassifying them as a parks maintenance worker three. They would actually become part of overseeing these new contracts we do putting in place. But it would force, we basically have, right now, we have three supervisors supervising six full-time positions and some temps, and we just don't feel that's the appropriate use of county resources. And in addition, we'd be eliminating one vacant full-time position, creating a promotional opportunity for the other two parks maintenance workers with an internal promotional opportunity. And once one was selected, then we'd be deleting the vacant position behind them, and would be eliminating one vacant temporary position as part of the redeployment. We would also, as I mentioned, be redeploying some seasonal and part-time help and giving them alternative duties where appropriate. We, over time, might achieve some cost savings through elimination of unnecessary positions, but right now, we're recommending we do some catch-up work with those forces. In conclusion, we recommend that you approve the specific recommendations in the proposed resolution, which incorporates specific staffing and budget adjustments as detailed in the staff report. We would entertain any questions at this time.
Come on out there.
Sure, thank you. I saw some kibitzing going on. I misstated something, here's your chance.
You can go back to six.
Sure. Tell me when I get there.
Six, one more.
There you go.
That's it. Okay. Increased fertilization, two to three times per year. Currently, all fertilization is extra charged, so our contractors provide no fertilization. We incur all those costs, all that labor. Under the new contracts, both contractors will provide fertilization three times a year, so.
Okay, we're currently paying extra, right, with this new pricing and savings, actually embedding free fertilizations a year.
We've actually been doing it in-house the last couple of years, so.
Twice a year?
Good deal.
Yes. So it'll be significant savings.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, I'm going to go first, because I have a couple of questions I want, and a couple of questions is, when you're taking the Parks and Rec Maintenance person and putting them over into, changing, you get to a public works position, one of those will, one of the two people will be qualified to go over there, because I don't want to come back later and find out that one of them lost their job because that didn't work out that way. And I want to know what their, I'm sorry, I didn't say it right. Could you please tell me what the job, you know, from going from working to Parks and Rec over to working for Public Works, what the change is?
Yeah, it's in the Streets Division, but it would actually be doing primarily sewer cleaning work, sort of assigning an extra full-time person to the VACTR crew and our rotor cleaning trucks to augment that, more rather than the catch-as-catch can, but more of a regular basis to get caught up with citywide sewer cleaning and flushing. It would be an internal promotional opportunity. The only people who would meet those specifications would be existing city staff, particularly public works staff. They would be required to obtain as a condition of probation within their first year the necessary, we require extra certifications on the streetside, that's why it's promotional, actually pay about 7% more across the scale, because they're required to have both a, should I get this right, Tatum, a water distribution certificate and a sewer collection certificate to be working on our water or sewer systems as needed. So that would become a promotion, a probationary requirement. Otherwise, did I get that right?
He's got it.
Uh-oh. I'm watching body language, so I must have missed a target.
Uh-huh.
Actually, the requirements are water distribution grade one and a commercial license, a Class B commercial license.
All right, thank you.
And you will afford them the opportunity to get that?
Yes, the distribution license, that exam's only given twice a year, so we have to discuss whether we'd give them, some cities give 18 months, so we have to look at that. And we provide send-in training, do everything we can to make sure they're successful.
Okay, because I just wanted to make sure that I asked before that we're Okay, 'cause I just wanted to make sure that, I asked before that if we did any of this moving, was anybody gonna lose their job? And the answer was no. So I just want to make sure.
The potential applicants would be three, would affect three. It would be, you know, Chris, Chris and.
Okay, I mean, I just want to make sure.
I think you're pointing out three, so. Three full-time.
And, um, uh, just one thing that I want to say, and I've been saying this for years, I, you know, working, when you get a job that's called park maintenance and then you end up being a janitor, that just doesn't really sit right with me, but that's just my personal opinion. I've talked with Jason about it before and, um, that's just a little caveat that I wanted to add there. I mean, I know there's nothing we can do about it, but.
It's sort of part of the other duties as assigned, uh, they're all, you know, parks maintenance workers or civils maintenance workers and, um, to, you know, we've got districts that are, that are hemorrhaging and, and fund balances that are declining, and so.
Well, this thing's going on for a long time.
It's a bit of a radical move, but, uh, we think we can actually improve services to the taxpayers, save them money and do it in a compassionate way to our existing employees. And, uh, primarily, the folks who are gonna be redeployed are temporary and part-time, so they're sort of living season to season anyway, so, uh, we think it's, it's a fair opportunity to keep them employed, but with some new duties.
Okay, okay, that was, I like two cents. Um, anyone else?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, okay, who do we direct citizens' concerns to? You know, it's been really confusing. People have seen someone maybe out at the park mowing or doing something and they said, oh, you know, the bathroom door lock doesn't work. And they said, well, don't tell me, tell somebody else. So do we have a sinful person that all of these concerns can be directed to, whether it's landscaping or maintenance or all the other things?
Maintenance issues are handled through public works, any program issues are handled through Armando Morales. So anything related to opening, closings, landscape issues.
Graffiti vandalism, call the public works mainline and we'll.
Raise your hand.
Actually, you know.
Can we just call you?
Yes, sure. I think you have all my numbers.
Yeah, I do. Yeah. Thank you. Sometimes that's the good news.
It'll make it, I don't have to give out three anymore.
Yeah, really.
Over in that protocol, take care of that.
But like, if some of, you're saying if somebody notices that there's a broken sprinkler or something, because that's important.
Yeah.
And not to be blowing water out all over the place. Um, anyone else? Okay, uh.
Mayor, before you, uh, entertain a motion, I just wanted to, uh, inform the council, we did pass out a revised resolution on this item, uh, right before the meeting started. And basically, the provision, um, would add in addition to both the Proceda and the PLS contract to allow for additional services to be authorized by the manager up to the amount of appropriated funds, and in the event that additional funds were contracted for, it would be subject to the city's procurement, uh, policy. So what that means is if anything was cost above the thirty thousand dollar threshold, it would in fact come back to the, uh, city council for approval. Um, additionally, in section four, there's an appropriation from fund seven, uh, to sewer collection personnel for the public works maintenance worker two, and the, uh, number in that section four is, is, uh, inaccurate. It currently says seventy-six thousand, seven ninety-eight, and it should be forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
I was just getting ready to fly for the job myself. Okay, great. Um, was that, oh.
I'm just gonna make one more note, and I may have missed it in Steve's presentation, but I think it's important to point out, it mentions it in the staff report, but, you know, this reduction of ninety-seven thousand dollars, that includes us taking on the additional park, the northeast area park. So if you, if it was just kind of status quo, our savings would have been a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, um, total, but we're adding that park and we're still getting an almost a hundred thousand dollar savings, uh, and we're also increasing levels of service citywide.
That's really very good.
Good job.
Um, so, did, was it okay that you, you've already read it, or do you want to read it again?
Um, yeah, I'd be happy to read the, uh, read the motion. So recommended action is to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a multi-year agreement with Professional Landscape Solutions for landscape maintenance and city streetscapes and facilities in an initial annual amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Authorize the city manager to execute a multi-year agreement with Proceda Landscape Inc. for landscape maintenance of city parks in the initial annual amount of a hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Authorize the public works department position changes as outlined on the agenda. Appropriate forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars from fund seven, fund balance to sewer collection personnel for a public works maintenance worker two, full-time position, and eliminate the vacant temporary position. And authorize fiscal year twenty thirteen, fourteen budget adjustments related to the landscape maintenance services, uh, as noted, uh, on the agenda and as attached to the resolution, showing a net, uh, decrease of ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Very good. Um, can I have a motion?
Someone.
Second. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye. Okay, communication, um, city clerks reports, Donna?
I have a, um, certification committee meeting is this Thursday, uh, commission on aging meeting is June twenty-seventh, then we have another city council meeting on July second, and then the Independence Day celebration, July fourth, and the city offices are closed.
Yeah, did you say the youth committee?
Oh, I picked it, sorry. July first, Gulf City Council Youth Committee.
Um, now, uh, staff, anyone?
Just, uh, hey, acknowledgement of the brand-new, uh, room we have here, at least in the front half. Uh, really good work by Doug Fraser and his crew, as well as, um, our maintenance, uh, staff, Nathan Powers and, uh, Armando Morales and, and others involved in, in this work. It's not quite done yet, where there's gonna be a city logo that's gonna be, uh, put here. We've got a new podium that's gonna be coming and a few other improvements around the room, and then we're slowly going to be, um, doing additional improvements going back. Right now, we kind of focused on the stuff that was visible on the TVs, but we're gonna continue to work on improving and modernizing the building going back, so you'll see some, some work continue to happen over the next probably six months or so. So I do it as we have time and resources available, but, uh, it's a, a nice change and it's nice to get, get out of the seventies when this building was originally built.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, any other staff? Council? I'll start down here with Mr. Campion.
Nope.
Councilmember Cruz?
No, I've got nothing.
Councilmember Payne?
Jeez.
Councilmember Singleton?
I'm good.
Okay.
You?
All right. There's just a few things that, um, I want to say, and one of them is just, you know, the weather's getting hot and please don't leave your children or animals in the car. There are, um, ordinances that make that against the law and it, you know, happens every year and it's starting to happen already. And your children and your dogs don't like work, you don't like walking on the hot pavement, so I don't think that any one else does, so leave your critters home. They don't like chili cook-offs and they don't like farmers markets. Leave them someplace safe and cool as the weather starts heating up. And secondly, uh, the Gulf Youth Baseball All-Stars will be having a car wash, June twenty-third, at Tractor Supply Company, and so if you need your car washed, I hope you all come out and support our All-Stars. Uh, if not, just buy a ticket from them for five dollars and it'll help them with their uniforms and representing the city of Gulf at some tournaments that are coming up. So with that, we're adjourned.